Mr. Engapo, Mr. Roloff.
I'll get started. I do the play-by-play for the intro and Russ does the color commentary and then we kind of reverse roles throughout the day. So we'll do that. But we've both done both, so it helps. Just want to give you a brief overview. Most of what I'm going to tell you is already contained in my budget message. So if it sounds repetitive, it's because it is. But I thought, especially for people watching, it might be appropriate. I will say also that the Long Range Finance Committee made a suggestion that I'm going to honor and I'm going to do a special episode of City Managers Report to do an overview of the budget. So we'll do that as well. We've done it before, but we haven't done it for about seven or eight years now. So we'll do that again just to see if we get any more interest in the budget as a result of that.
Before you get started.
Oh, see, color commentary.
There is some new pages, revised pages in a paperclip by your desk. You can simply insert with the appropriate page numbers. It's just that we caught some things as we were going through it. We can talk about what those changes are. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware there are revised pages, like four, five, or six of them, something like that.
No, thanks. That's good housekeeping. So I'm going to focus most of my discussion on the general fund budget. When we get into the individual departments, we'll talk about some of the special funds. But the general fund, because it's supported so much by the tax levy, that's typically what we do. The budget itself for the general fund is proposed at $51.8 million. It's about a 3.41% increase over last year. The general fund is just a portion of our overall budget, which is our operating budget for next year is proposed at $164.4 million. So it's about a third of our overall budget, and the utilities are probably the biggest part outside of the general fund. The overall tax levy is proposed at $45.7 million. It's an increase of 4.19% increase. That's slightly more than what council was looking in the 3% to 4% range. We tried to get it at four, but with the uncertainty of over some of the revenues, and even all the revenues aren't reflected in here because even after we finished the budget, the state decided to finally give us some numbers, which was disappointing. The increases in the general fund, and I've got four bullet points of the increases in the general fund. There's overlap with these, but I think it's good for illustration purposes. Public safety is up about $1,377,000. Public Works is down $604,000, and we'll explain that a little later. Health insurance for the general fund, we estimate that portion about $900,000. And then unclassified is actually down by $1,088,000, and there's explanations for that as well. There's increases in areas such as debt service, probably more than anything. That's probably one of the biggest increases that's impacting the general fund levy. But there's also commodities and of course, health insurance. Because of all those factors, there are no specific staffing increases proposed in the base budget. The revised page that Russ just handed out, our budget enhancements, most of those are staffing, but not all. But any staffing requests above the base budget are being presented to you for your consideration. Pretty much what we've done in the past years, take a look at them. You can certainly ask if they'd be added to the budget when you get to your subsequent budget workshops. And each department will be prepared to talk about their individual budget enhancement packages over the course of their presentation. General fund operating expenses, for 2022, it looks as though we're about $850,000 over budget. I'm going to have Russ do most of the explaining for that. It's really an accounting change in public works. If you recall, we decided to, for purposes of our expenditure restraint program, we decided to move our central garage into an internal service fund. And it's had some accounting changes that we adjusted to throughout the year. I don't know if we went and get in the weeds of it, but...
Well, I don't know if we need to get into the weeds, but just as an overview, we've started implementation of this internal service fund. Basically, that's just an accounting tool to record activities that we're allocating to other resources. And it could be general fund, but it's also water and sewer and other utilities. So it's all of the maintenance of equipment, but it's also the people side of things. So it's not only just the parts. It's also the labor side of things. So because we're in this transition, and we wanted to start it this year, we've had some issues on the technology side of things. So we've really had a big struggle on what's called the chargebacks, where we actually charge the departments for the time spent from the internal service fund. We're working through some of that. We've had a couple of issues where things weren't being recorded correctly. We've worked with our vendor. I think we're getting closer to getting that resolved, but there's still some issues out there. And so we're in kind of this transition period, so it makes it a little bit more difficult to follow. The other accounting thing that I think I just want to highlight real quickly is in 2022, at the beginning of the year, we did a comprehensive review of what we call our object code. So we account for activities within different funds. Then we have different departments or organizations. And then from there, we list the expenditures by an object code. So like personnel services is a set of object codes and materials and supplies, and then contractual services. So when you're looking at the budget, you're going to see some fluctuation in some of those object codes, but in total, we're okay. It made it a little bit more difficult for departments to submit their requests this year, but we have built that new history going forward in how we're grouping our expenditures. So we continue to work on that. So you might see that during the budget process.
Yeah, from line item to line item, you may see, oh, my gosh, they're over. But if you look at the bottom line, things are in pretty good shape. So it's several accounting things over the course of the year. But the only one that I point out on the operating side that's higher than usual are retirement payouts. They were higher than anticipated. And there's actually an increase going into next year, into '23 as well.
Is that sick pay?
It's a combination. Is that all sick pay?
It's a combination of sick pay plus there is a provision that you can cash in some of your sick leave towards our deferred compensation program, not retirement, but the voluntary deferred compensation. So some people, when they get close to retirement, start maximizing the amount of money that they can bring down their sick leave liability and turn it into an asset.
Is that representative employees or all employees?
It's now all.
I'm curious about the state policy or our policy?
It's our policy. Actually, it had been just for public safety.
Okay.
But as we looked at it a couple of years ago, we saw advantages for us because you're paying it out two or three years prior to the person retiring. And then at retirement, they get no sick leave payout. So they're trading it in. What they're betting on is that the market's going to be going up. If they chose this year, this would have been a poor decision, but that's...
Not really.
By low, yeah. By the end of the year, it's a good decision. So there are those provisions. But that's a portion of sick leave. Is vacation included in that amount? I can't remember.
It's included in '68, yes.
Okay, so we, because we do not, you do not get your vacation until the year after. You finish working the year, then you get your allocation for the year. So for example, you left now, you'd be getting your 2022 vacation that you earned after the fact. So there's payouts there, too.
Okay, thank you.
So anyway, but also, general fund revenues are also up about a similar amount. So we're in decent shape. Ambulance revenues, calls for services, as the chief has pointed out, calls for service continue to rise. And even after we gave up the hospital transfers, our utilization rate's going up. I'll let chief talk about that. I will say that ambulance revenue has now overtaken state transportation aids as our number three revenue in the general fund. That's not just because ambulance revenues are up. Transportation revenues, as we found out after the fact, are going. Transportation's going down, right?
General transportation aid is going down, yes.
Yeah. So I talked about some of the increases. Employee health insurance, obviously, was a concern. We told you we thought it would be as much as 24%. Working with our employee focus group, we've gotten that increase down to 16%. The employees understood the need to increase some deductibles to get us more consistent with the market. So we're talking about getting consistent with pay. We also need to get consistent with benefits, so that's why we're doing that. So those are two of those things. Unclassified is, I'm sorry, it is an increase. Excuse me, I had the wrong, I had a dash there. Most of the increase is due to the $1,274,000 that was set aside for the salary study implementation. Last week, I met with staff and gave them some of my thoughts on that. They're going back to the consultant. I anticipate you'll be approving the new salary system at your December meeting for implementation by January 1st. You're pensive, so I...
Yeah, my question on that is that we're setting money, because the money you set aside is not to pay for the study. The money you set aside is to help get people...
To implement.
To implement. But won't that be an ongoing expense?
Eventually. We don't know what it's going to be yet.
It'll go to the departments, but because we didn't, even at this point, we don't know exactly how much you're going to get versus how much you're going to get. So we put a pool of money into the unclassified. Once we implement it, then it'll get charged to the individual departments.
So within the individual departments right now, the payroll expense is estimated to be frozen. But people are eligible for steps, so we figured out those step increases. Those are in the department budgets right now. Once council implements the new wage and compensation study, we are anticipating that's going to be at a cost of about $1,274. We'll take it out of contingency and move it into the departments.
Okay. So that means next year, the base will be higher by .2 in all the departments?
Yeah, depending on how you approve the compensation, class compensation study, yeah.
So that, thank you, because that's important. But when we gave you that presentation back in July or August, we were anticipating about a million and a half. So the balance is in other funds, but this is the general fund impact, the $1,274. I think the departments will talk about the strategic plan and how their budget requests align with our strategic plan. I won't go into it a ton, except to say that we've successfully applied for some federal bipartisan infrastructure law. You'll hear the word BIL. That's taken care of, what, Osborne and a portion of Washburn. And we're going to keep applying. We have projects that qualify under that. Not every street in the city qualifies. Small residential streets do not qualify. They're usually larger streets. We picked ones we felt were best candidates, and you're going to see more of that in the CIP as we go along.
Yeah, they basically have to be collector's streets before that we can get federal funding.
So we have a variety of things there. Quality of life. I know that museum director Sarah Phillips will be talking about the Deep Roots Growing City exhibit, as well as the education aspects of what she's doing with her program. She's also going to be making, in addition to what she's going to talk to you about over the next two days, she'll also be making a presentation during our joint meeting with the school board. So the school board's aware of that as well. There's been great cooperation and real happy with the work that Sarah's been doing. Property tax, again, the levy is about 4.19%. The rate itself will be about $12.07. That's an increase of 46 cents. As Russ continues to point out, our rate is somewhat misleading because the assessed ratio, we're getting towards being 70% of full value. Clearly, we have to do a revale, and we're prepared to do that in 2024. We don't have our city assessor right now. We're going through some reorganization issues there. So I anticipate we'll still be on schedule to implement that in 2024. The biggest challenge for the levy was more about the debt service. You recall, the council made a very wise decision to borrow an extra $7.3 million in anticipated 2023 projects. And there's a bump in our debt service because of that. We're blessed that we have a strong fund balance, and the finance staff have taken a look at it, and they believe we can draw down our reserves that are well in excess of our 30% threshold and use some of that for paying down the debt for 2023, which we think is a wise move.
Can I just expand on that real quick? Because I want everybody to have the basic knowledge. When we issued debt in 2022, we have to plan for repayment of that debt starting in 2023. So our 2023 principal and interest payments includes paying off debt that we took in 2022, but it's really for 2023 projects. So when we set it up, we set it up on equal payments, and it was amortized based on the life of the assets. Some of the assets were like three years, some of it's five years, some of it's 10 years, and some of it's 20 years. So there's a big chunk of debt that we need to pay in 2023 that's really technically for 2023 capital projects that we haven't even let yet. So the levy, because we borrowed 20-some million dollars in 2022 versus over $14 million, we have $6 million additional principal and interest payments. We're suggesting that that would be best used by fund balance just for one year, because then in 2024, the debt payment will be for the projects that are, we've already incurred the debt and are paying back that debt. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because our borrowing in 2023 is only a little over $7 million.
So if you look at the schedule, we're actually going to be recommending to you that $2 million worth of fund balance be used to reduce the levy necessary on the debt service.
And the only other use of fund balance that we're proposing, at least at this time, is for the 2024 assessment, or revaluation, excuse me. That's funds that have been accumulated over the years, and that's a spike in expenditures for one year. We figure it's an excellent one-time use. I don't want to get on my stump too long. Council's very familiar with my next topic, general fund revenues. It's an increase of 3.74%. Again, state aids are increasing a whopping 0.87%, less than 1%. And that does not include transportation aids, which we got after the fact. Shared revenue remains at $9.6 million. That hasn't changed since 2013. And you've seen my charts over that Russ and I keep showing, not only to you, but we keep showing to other folks all throughout the state. It's been a decrease or the same over the last 30 years. So the group that I'm with, with the Wisconsin Counties Association, Towns Association, and League of Municipalities, we've been working. Professor Ford, as a little side gig, has been supporting that group as well. And I know Mike can speak to some of this as well. But it's really, we need to revamp our revenue system at the state level. This is not sustainable, and we're going to be issuing a white paper in the next six to eight weeks to tell that story, but also taking a look at other research.
The league or, when you say we, the city or the league?
The group. The group is going to be issuing this white paper.
Okay.
Transportation aids is in the budget at $3,500,000. That's exactly what we had estimated originally. We were just told that we can probably count on $2,850,000. So we're already $150,000 in the hole. As we start, we'll figure it out by the time we balance it out for you. But just know that we've got another $150,000. And I know that the answer is not the tax levy. I know that. But we have a hole that we have to fill for you, and so be aware of that. The municipal services payment program, that is a directive that the council gave me. I do not consider this a success. We're getting an extra $33,000. It has nothing to do with any effort on my part, so I won't take credit for something. But that's still only a 3% increase. It's not even close to reflecting what we should be getting.
And we get about 30 cents on the dollar.
Yeah.
We should be getting, you know, three times as much.
So yeah, if we were getting the full payment, we'd have an extra $2 million in our coffers. So we're clearly getting shortchanged by the state in that.
Is that including the shared revenue and the municipal services payment?
Just MSP.
Just MSP.
Okay. What was the total?
Shared revenue's frozen.
But what would we anticipate that should be if it had not, if it had kept up?
I'll put, if we had kept up, I'm giving you a rough number. This was discussed.
Yeah.
I think we'd be probably getting another $2 million if they had maintained the program and given us rate of inflation. Even as inflation over the previous decade was, you know, 1-2%. If we had gotten just inflation for the last 30 years, we'd have roughly 2 million more. And MSP, there'd be 4 million more. What would that do for our levy if we could reduce that? So clearly, we're getting shortchanged. But we're not alone. Every municipality in the state's getting shortchanged. Fund balance, I'll try to end on a positive note. We have a very good fund balance. We are well in excess of our maximum that was recommended to you by the Long Range Finance Committee. That's on page 69. We do have page numbers this year. Thank you for your input. On page 69, you can see that undersigned fund balance. I just have to find it myself. But I think it bears...
It's behind the first...
Oh, where it says general fund summary. Yeah, that'd be a good place to put it. Thanks. So you can see that we ended the year 2022 with just slightly less than $18.3 million.
That's a projection at this time.
I'm sorry. That's right. It was $18,281 at the end of '21.
2021. That's an actual number from the audit. We're projecting revenues to be over budget, but we're also expecting right now expenditures could be over. Again, it's very hard to estimate how things are going to come out during the year, but this is our best estimate at this point in time.
So that's about 36%. So we're 6% in excess of our max. That's why we feel very comfortable using the 2 million for the debt service and the $200,000 for the revale.
Is this primarily unfilled positions that it's leading to this fund balance?
This year, we are probably, as we're looking at our projections right now, we still have expenditures coming in. And I think some of that is some of the backfilling for overtime and public safety. There are also some other commodities that are coming in higher than budget, like gas. So right now, we're looking to be over budget on the expense side by
The commodities are, but if you ask the two chiefs, they'll answer you in the affirmative.
I'm just curious, right, because I was saying that for you.
Yeah.
With budget balance, so it's...
But just the reason it's highlighted on this page is those are estimates.
Can you just explain what you mean by the backfilling statement you just made?
Oh, sure. When people are out sick.
Yep.
We have to call people in to fill. And, you know, I think the overtime budgets are going to be pretty close to budget or probably a titch over budget, based on the amount of time that I see through the first eight months.
So that's pretty much my general overview. Mr. Collins and his management staff are here to talk about the transportation budget. So Jim, I'll let you kind of guide us through where you want to go first.
All right. Good morning. Let's start, I want to spend the majority of time talking about transit because that's the largest budget. But in due diligence, we got five of them to go through. So let's start with the enterprise funds. Since it's first, let's start with the parking utility on page 371, which shouldn't take long, and then we can get into transit. So 371 is the parking utility. As you know, I mean, since I've started here, I mean, our parking facility is, parking utility is only that really in name only because we don't have paid parking or anything of that nature anymore. We just get a little bit of revenue from permits, basically. And that, overall, the parking utility budget is basically, if you take out some of the outstanding bond payments, all that's left, it's basically break even. We pay a couple of people downstairs to manage the permits, and we sell some permits. And as we've talked about over the years, we know like our parking lot reconstructions and maintenance goes mostly into the capital budget now. So it's really, it's a utility in name only, in my opinion, because there's not really much there. So I don't really have much else to say about that. I mean, we know the bid that took care of that deal last year's.
Yeah. In terms of giving you any insight, you know, we are taking a look at, I don't know if the utility will end up paying for this or what, but looking at charging stations, we've had some discussions about that. So it's not reflected in here yet because we're still evaluating it. But we anticipate we'll be proposing something down the road.
And the reconstruction, like I said, they're coming out of the capital budget. So this year, we're doing that, the lot that was behind the former exclusive company. That project's in progress. It's a pretty small project, should be done in a few weeks. And then next year, we're looking at a few mill and overlays, the 400 West lot, we're looking at milling and overlaying, Tech Miller cul-de-sac, 24th Avenue boat launch, and a small space, a small area by the South Park tennis court. So those are mostly going to be milling overlays, clean up, improve some ADA access at some of those lots, and then fix or construct a dumpster enclosure over there in that lot behind Kits and Files. So that's, those are the projects we're currently planning for next year, and we're working on some maintenance and some other lot. If there's no questions on that, then let's go to page 375, which will be the transit budget. So that one, a couple of things I just want to point out. The local levy of the transit budget is only about 20%. The city, we get great bang for our buck. We receive support from the Federal Transit Administration, the Wisconsin DOT, the county. We have a revenue agreement with Fox Valley Tech, and most recently with the school district. We used to get support with a revenue agreement from UWO. That's dwindled over the last five years or so. All this funding, I want to point out, it's great. It's great for the city. It's great for our budgets. But it comes with a lot of strings attached, and I'll get into that in a minute. I'll talk first about our projects and how they relate to the strategic plan. We were fortunate in that we received a lot of grant funding the last few years, so we have been able to do quite a few different projects. This coming year, we're working with the East Central Wisconsin Plan Commission on updating our transit development plan. We'll be working on that next year. And that allows us to evaluate all of our service days, our hours, our routes, our fares, operator schedule, kind of take a broad look at everything, and reset our transit strategic plan. So that's in process. We have a planning grant with the state that East Central's managing for us, and we'll be working with a consultant on that next year. Some of the things we need to look at, we need to evaluate our 24/7 pair transit service. I'm not sure if that's sustainable. If we didn't do that, we're the only system in the state that offers that right now. I think it would possibly increase in competition and probably improve our service as well and match us to the rest of the state. So that's something through our transit development plan we'll be looking at, along with everything else.
Jim, if you just specify exactly the difference, because that kind of gets lost sometimes, because we do provide a service that no one else provides. But it's kind of put us in a pickle, because once you try to start backing from that, people get concerned about it. And I think the council actually had a presentation from a citizen on one of those issues.
Yep. So basically, what we're required as a public transit system to provide is, we're provided... So basically, what we're required as a public transit system to provide is, we're provided, we're required to provide paratransit service. So that is for people that are unable to use the fixed route bus for whatever reason, they're elderly or disabled. That service is required to match the public transit service. So we operate six days a week, 6:15 a.m. to 6:45 p.m. for fixed route transit. So by state law, and well, federal law, actually, that's what we're required to provide for paratransit. The same hours, it's designed to be equal to, we can offer more and better service than fixed route, but not less. So most systems in the state, actually every system in the state I'm aware of, matches their, their paratransit to fixed route. In Oshkosh, at some point in time, it was decided, and I think what happened is because we had a local cab company that was 24/7, they just kind of said, well, we can do this. And the transit system at the time said, well, that would be a benefit, so let's just do that. Which, you know, 30 years ago, might have made some sense because they were the only game in town. But now we're to the point now where we're kind of stuck with that current service and vendor because we have been unable to get other vendors to bid on our service because they don't want to take care of the 24/7 staffing. Whereas for a local company, it's not a big deal. So there's that. And there is a cost associated with it as well. And we know that from our ridership, particularly between the hours of like midnight and 4 a.m., there's virtually no ridership. I mean, there's maybe a couple here and there. But I know our previous vendor had told, suggested as well that, they said, we're basically just have somebody sitting in the office drinking coffee trying to stay awake so that in case somebody calls. So that's something that I think we'll need to look at as we go into our development.
A question then, this is for folks who have mobility issues, right?
Yep.
So if we no longer had that, and what is that cost, that different, that difference in cost?
You mean, what does it cost after hours?
The extra, the, the beyond our regular transit costs that we're matching with the para.
Right. I would have to, to do that, I'd have to like multiply, I'd have to take the number of rides that we did after hours and multiply it by the cost to figure it out. The cost per ride is the same to us, which is.
No, I mean, the cost for us to staff that with the contractor. We don't know that.
Is that what?
Okay. The, the reason I'm asking is because will it end up that if somebody who has mobility issues and that's not available using the ambulance instead, and it just gets shifted? That's my question.
They could, they can request a cab, which is exactly what they're effectively doing right now.
It, doesn't the paratransit offer for like folks who are using electric wheelchairs? Because they cannot use a cab unless the cab is able to accommodate.
Yeah. Well, they could, they, it's basically, right now, it's Oshkosh City Camp, who has those vehicles. So they could do it a private ride if they wanted to. You know, they just need to let them know what they need. And that, that's basically what, what they would do. Obviously, if you need an ambulance, then you would need to call an ambulance. But you could call a private ride.
And they can accommodate the wheelchairs?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Okay.
One of the biggest things also is when it comes to bidding the contract, the overall cost of the entire program. Because if you have someone that's going to be bidding out of 24/7, obviously, your cost is going to go up because it's, they have to pay for that, right?
Right.
So it's, it affects us long-term from the bidding process because it makes it a less attractive bid with the 24/7.
But I think, yeah, that's a good question, though. As we get into that, we'll, we'll have to obviously calculate that number and provide you with what that data is. You know, this is how many rides it is, and this is how much it costs.
But when the, the bid comes in, if, I mean, is there any comparable, like other community that doesn't provide that 24/7 paratransit that we can look to for that rough bid number that would be different than what we're getting with City Camp?
Yeah. Yeah, for sure. So we'll, like I said, we'll look at the transit development plan, and there'll be more information coming on that. A couple of other things I want to talk about, Route 10. We've, have you seen in the newsletter and a couple of press articles? We've been talking with the county. They've agreed to help us fund that through the first quarter. And in the meanwhile, we're going to look at developing a pilot. We don't know exactly what that is yet, but we're working on it. So we've had some meetings with East Central. Once we get a better definition of what that'll be, then we can share more information on it. But it's likely to be some type of, they call microtransit, but it's like a cab connect type program. And the goal of it is to take a smaller vehicle, people would schedule a ride on demand, and then get them to the fixed route to connect. So that you still want them to use fixed route if they can. And then there'd probably be another option that would connect Oshkosh to Nina as well. So that, that's what we're looking at. Like I said, it's still, it's getting past the concept, and we're getting into development of something. And then we need to get back with the county and make sure everybody's on board. But that's to come yet. So we did, we have that in our budget, and the county does as well. Our school contract, I want to talk about that for a few minutes. It has, it has good and bad. I mean, ridership has exploded with that program, which is good. I mean, that helps us with all of our reporting and things like that. The bad is it has put a strain on our resources. We did add the trip or service. However, most recently, and Steve can attest to this, our staff and the police departments time to deal with the behavioral issues, including fights, harassment, bullying with both the riders and operators. It's, it's been a big strain, and it's weekly, sometimes a couple of times a week. As you know, the contract was a third, a third, a third. The city private school district currently, this current year, it's basically a third, two thirds. So the city's a third, school district picked up the two thirds. They did get a little bit of support from the Boys and Girls Club, but that was a pretty minor. So when we discuss this at the meetings, these are some of the things we need to discuss. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Steve. But I know he's spending a lot of time on it, him and my operations supervisor are dealing with these issues probably twice a week.
Yeah, it's, it's putting a strain on our, on our staff. We're spending on the best scenario, one hour a day on student issues, basically bouncing a bar bouncer, counting people on the bus, making sure everyone's on there safe. We can spend up to five hours a day between, you know, monitoring, you know, if a fight breaks out, issues. We got to chase down buses, pull tapes off buses, come back in, scour tapes to try to find these issues. So we're spending anywhere from one to five hours a day, just literally trying to keep the peace on the city buses. And it's lost in all this is, we've got regular families that are on these buses that are trying to get to and forth. And it's, it's got to a point where a couple of issues this year have been pretty bad. So we've kind of had to take the bull by the horns, manually go out there, physically make sure these kids aren't killing each other trying to get on the bus, capping the bus at a certain limit. So our drivers, I mean, we're lost in all this. Our drivers spend more time backwards than they are forwards. So we need to be focused on the road. So it's been a huge strain on our system.
So when you say regular families are being affected, what is, what does that mean?
Last week, we had a mother, baby, and groceries on a bus, you know, and the kids are, you know, acting up. We've got people that are trying to get to and from, home from, home from work, right? Car goes down, they're taking the bus to get to and from work. We got a mother with a baby trying to just come home with groceries. And you know, you've got the behavior on this bus, on the buses is got to a point where we literally have to monitor how many people, restrict the ridership to a certain amount of people, empower, you know, our, our drivers, put them in a better position to be safe. And it's taxed us quite a bit.
So we don't have to pull tapes or do those other things outside of the student buzzing?
Outside of behavioral issues, no. No. So what happens is you have a fight on the bus. So, you know, Russ will have to go out there, or Maggie will have to go out there, change a tape, find the bus, track it down, which one it was, because there's, you know, Route 1 or Route 2 in any half hour. It could be either one of the two buses, track down the bus, change the tape, come back to the office, scour for the time that it may, you know. So it's one thing if we know the exact time. If the school comes back or SRO, hey, there was, you know, someone throwing a bottle on the bus, right? What time, what bus, what school, right? Then we got to figure out what school they go to, which SRO to go down. And then, you know, you got the communication. And then, you know, what wasn't happening until late last year was no one was being held accountable on these rides. So no one was getting suspended because there wasn't a lot of communication or coordination between the school district and us. So we've kind of worked with the SROs to kind of help manage suspensions, kicking problem, people off the bus. So no, apparently it's going fine. We run smooth, and we're just, you know, doing our regular operational duties. But when you have these instances pop up, yeah, we're spending a lot of time.
Has it changed since the second bus was added?
Uh, not really, no.
Because it seemed like a lot of this originally was kind of due to the crowding and students trying to get on the bus. I mean, is that, that hasn't changed then, since the second? There hasn't been a decrease?
No. I'd like to say, I mean, initially, yes, but we, we, yeah, student ridership is up, I believe, at 1.07. But I believe the last time I checked was like 50%, 57% higher this year versus last year. The ridership at North is twice what it is. We could have up to 90 to 100 students riding that bus at that 3:30 time release. So yeah, we've actually capped it at 40. And basically, the same thing that the school buses do, you know, capped it at seating capacity only, which affords our drivers to be able to see what's going on. We had one instance earlier this year where the driver couldn't see what's going on in the back of the bus, you know. Also lost in this, and we have these fights and disturbances, the bus pulls over, and we got to sit there. And they got to wait for the police to show up, wait for us to show up. So I mean, not, not only are you, you know, you're compromising the system based on the fact that now we have to wait on, you know, the police to come and sort of mess out on the bus, which also, you know, decreases our performance because we've got people who are trying to get home or trying to get to work now, just sitting there waiting for kids to behave.
So we'll talk, I, I think my point, and I'll get into this a little, excuse me, of staffing, but I wanted to bring that up because we are having a meeting with the school district soon. So I think that needs to be, we'll be discussing that with them. Just to get through the strategic plan part then, the Downtown Transit Center, as you can see, we're progressing pretty nicely with platform improvements. That's going to add a staff break room, a supervisor office, which will help us manage some of those issues down there and allow us to have some pass sales at limited time, you know, each month. It'll improve the safety and security for our current riders and staff, improve lighting, ADA access. And overall, the aesthetics of the area are going to be much better. I think we use some color concrete, which I think looks pretty nice. If you get a chance to check it out, I mean, it's not done yet, but I think it looks a lot better than it did. So that's phase one. We're also planning a phase two for 2024 with ARPA money. And then we're going to be applying for some additional grants. The NEPA, which is our environmental processes, that's in progress. We completed phase one, we're on phase two. Phase one, because there was that, the tent and onyx company used to be right next to where we would like to put phase two, which is kind of where the Grand Opera House office is. There is potential contamination, so we have to do a phase two, which means they have to do some borings, some soil borings testings, and figure out what mitigation efforts we might have to put in there. It's not a deal staffer by any means, but it just, we need to know, and then we need to know what we need to do. So we're in the process of that, and then we're going to be talking to the state. And we have, in ARPA funds, we have about 1.8 million, and then we have potentially a little bit of cares left. Right now, on the conservative side, we're estimating that project will be about 4 million. So we are going to be talking to the state and feds about some additional grants. That project, what we are envisioning is a second platform, which will get buses off the street. We currently have like Coach USA, which does some intercity service. They currently have to load and unload on the street on Pearl. And then Route 10 often does as well. We'll be able to get those off the street and allow us a room for a little bit of expansion. But then for the public, what we envision is a small public restroom and heated waiting area. So another building similar to what they're constructing there, similar size, but a public building versus a staff building. So we'll see what we get in grant funding. The Fed, the FTA did ask me if we could phase it, if we can't get funding for both. So it's possible, then we would probably do the platform first and then potentially the building later. But I'm hopeful we can get it all done with one project. So that's kind of the exciting things we got going on with the projects. I want to talk a little bit about staffing then. Our staffing, our operators have been extremely hard to find. We've been, we're trying to reduce overtime and part-time work by hiring an additional full-time operator slash laborer. What that is, is somebody that drives most of the time, but then we don't even drive. They'll do light maintenance and help in other areas. But we haven't been able to find one yet, so it's been a long process. We've had at least one vacant position almost all year. We've had a person on work comp all year, so it's, it's been a challenge. We're hoping that we'll be able to find some staff. But that's been a challenge. In the office, I do think, I mean, we have a great competent staff, you know, Brian and Steve are here in addition to the rest of our staff. Although we are, compared to our peers and with our current workload, I would say we're understaffed. Steve oversees, he's our transit operations manager. He oversees operations, grant applications, including reporting, technology, our federal, our state reporting, procurement, training, safety programs. So it's just a hybrid of everything, whereas most systems have two, three people doing that. You know, I oversee transit, our electric division, signs, street painting, parking utility. I do a lot of our traffic engineering, and I'm also liaison for some boards and commissions. And I also help Steve with grants and reporting because he's just so overloaded. And then Brian's our transit maintenance manager. He oversees our maintenance and our buildings, and he also supervises our sign and street painting division. So none of us are complaining, but I just, we do get a lot of bang for our buck. I mean, we do enjoy the diversity, and it keeps us busy, but it is a challenge.
So real quick, maybe this is more of a mark question. So the addition of budget position, you say we're holding it equal, that's in the operating budget?
In the general fund, yeah.
Okay.
And this is really more of a strategy thing because they've had such lack of success getting part-time drivers that the thought is get a full-time driver and make that person, have that person kind of fill in on spot areas because they can always be in the shop working on vehicles. But if there's a bus that needs a driver, they pull the person out of the, out of the garage and put them on a bus.
Got it. And you don't have to answer now, but maybe tomorrow at some point, just be nice to get an overall list of new positions, even if they're outside in general.
Sure.
Yeah, and I would say those positions, what do they drive, 80% of the time, maybe 90? I mean, they're driving almost majority of the time. Once in a great while, they'll be in the shop, but it's pretty rare.
In a good week, good paid period, we like last, we didn't, weren't really terribly stressed. We had four drivers with over 100 hours over a two-week period.
Because that's another thing, we are, you know, with the operators, we're similar to the police department. For you, somebody's got to drive the bus. I mean, we got to go, so whatever, however we need to fill that, we fill it, which is usually overtime. Because if you're out of bodies, it's overtime, or that's it.
So I guess related to that, the, just looking at your, your budget for overtime, you're anticipating it to go back to normal? Is that realistic?
At, right now, yes. I mean, it's hard to say because we haven't been able to fill positions. So, and, and the other interesting thing with our, with our budget is because we're a utility that we're funded by the state and the Fed, we have to budget conservatively. It's better for us to budget more and spend less than it is to budget less because, two reasons. First of all, we can't go back and ask for more money. So the state tells us, like even for fuel, budget conservatively, because if fuel goes up and you come back to us later and say, hey, fuel went up, we weren't expecting it, there's nothing we can do because our budget's already set. We don't have more money. But if you budget conservatively and you don't spend that money, at least it's there if you need it. So that's the main reason. But the second reason is the transit budgeting, how it works in the state is they take the federal money, and then the state doles it out to equal percentage to all the transit systems in the state. So this year, it's been better because they've gotten more federal funding. But traditionally, it goes down about a half percent per year. But, so say they say we get 53.5%. It's not like, you know, lacrosse, if we spend less, it's not like we get more money or any, it's 53.5% to all the systems that aren't, so it's lacrosse, Eau Claire, Oshkosh. So no matter what, if I spend more or less, I still get 53.5%. So if I spend less, it just means somebody else gets more because they just balance it all out. So it is very unique, the way that that happens.
But to answer Mike's question, though, the, we plan to fill all of our vacancies. But in reality, do we, do we expect to follow the plan to the letter? Most likely not, because I don't see the, the labor market changing dramatically. But if we could fill all these positions, we would, and then overtime would go down dramatically. But at this time next year, you're going to be asking me the same question, you know, do you expect it? We're going to keep using overtime. But it's not sustainable, asking folks to work 100 hours a week is crazy.
And that half percent cut coming from the feds, I mean, do we offset that then?
That's where you've seen our levy go up over the years. This will be the first time in 30 years that I've seen an actual increase in that reimbursement. What are you estimating, Jim?
Well, this year, they, they're at 60% this year, and they're estimating 57% next year, which is unheard of. And the, the reason is this year because they got all that bill money, and they got more money, basically more federal transit funding. So if they were able to offer that or to spread that out. So if they were able to offer that or to spread that out over the state, so that's the good news.
Yeah, but that half percent, I asked Jim when he first got here, take a look at it since the early nineties. And it was consistently, it averaged out to a half percent. Um, we were getting sixty, when I first got here to Wisconsin in ninety-two, we were getting about sixty-eight percent. And it's just, that's good, it's gone down. The last couple of years, it's gone up, it's gone, it's been off, but, which is good, which has kept our levy. If you look on page three seventy-seven, the very first line, the general property tax, we're able to hold that, and that's a good thing. Even with a staffing increase, we're able to hold that. Um, but this, these are just some odd times that we're kinda managing through.
Yeah, and, you know, and we've been able to offset some of that with fund balance if we need to. The transit, we have a transit fund balance, which we need to use for transit because it was transit money. But, um, if we, we have to spend ninety percent of our budget for the state, otherwise we have to pay them back some money. So our goal is always to spend between ninety and a hundred. But say we spent ninety percent, that ten percent goes to the utility fund balance. Had historically pretty decent balance. So that's offered, that's allowed us to do some projects, which I'm hoping that's another, um, for phase two, if we need a little additional funding, it's possible, we can maybe look at that fund balance. But we have to see what we can get for grants first. So.
I just have a.
Yeah.
Um, question, so I notice, uh, the EAA passenger revenue. So that's basically over the course of two weeks, right?
Yep.
And that is, um, let's see here, I was comparing that, um. Oh, yeah, I was just wondering, like, what, what is a comparable, uh, fare revenue that would come in without EAA for that same bus during that two-week period? Is there, is, I mean.
Yeah.
I know every route is different, but that one is high demand.
Yep, yeah, so we get right now about forty-one thousand a year in EAA revenue. And that's basically, we sell a one-way fare of five dollars or a weekly pass for, for thirty.
Round trip.
Right, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, wrong trip. We have to do that because of federal fare rules. Um, actually, we, we wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind increasing that. However, because of our federal fare rules, we can't really increase it too much without causing, basically, we're, we can't charge a premium fare. So how we get around that is, our argument is that it's just outside of the city limits. So it's a little bit longer route, so it's more comparable to Oshkosh to Nina, which we charge three dollars, so six dollars round trip. So, so far, they bought it, when I've said five dollars, kind of explained it, they're like, uh, all right. And then they don't ask too much more, but it's kinda, it's a gray area. But, um, but yeah, it, it's hard to say because we offer shuttle buses between the university and the, um, EAA fairgrounds in addition to, um, the two routes that run all day. So in the morning and the afternoon during the rush, we have, how many buses have we run, like five or six?
Usually six.
Plus our two, so it'd be hard, I would say maybe, but to answer your question, I mean, just guessing, it would maybe be three thousand. I mean, it'd be a lot less.
Right, and so that, those shuttles are included in that forty-seven eighty-five, okay.
Um, so just getting back to staffing, as we discussed earlier, the contract with the YSD, that's led to increased staff time. Um, locally, we've had additional reporting requirements, um, with the strategic plan and the DEI metrics. Um, however, federally, we've also seen increased reporting requirements. Um, like I said before, all these funds come with strings. Every single source of funds requires a lot of reporting. Um, we've gotten these more grants, even our ARPA and cares, it's great to get that money, but it does require a lot more reporting. We have to report on every dollar we spent. Um, in the last couple of years, they've increased our reporting with, they've added a transit asset management plan. So we do track our assets, but now we have to report to them every quarter and every year on those assets and the tracking. And they've also, last year, they added a public transit safety action plan, which is a binder almost the size of this that we have to, that we had to create, and we have to report on that every year, so Steve has done that. Um, that's the downside to all this federal funding. So even though we're a small urban, we're Oshkosh, our, our reporting requirements are the same as Chicago and New York, which is crazy, but that's how they set it up, so, um, that's how it goes. So the other thing we'd like to advance our reporting and technological capabilities. But again, finding staff time to do that's been hard, and it's gonna continue to be difficult. Um, and the last point on that is, you will, and I know, um, the mayor's very familiar with this cause I think last time it happened was two thousand and ten. Um, there is some talk with the census of combining the Appleton and Oshkosh urban planning areas. Um, they call it the UZA, but it's the urban planning area. Um, I've talked with the feds and states about this and Valley Transit over the last few years. We would continue to operate separate systems, um, for, from a transit standpoint, it would require additional reporting and staff time to do that. Um, some of the main differences are that, um, fifty-three-ten, which is some of paratransit aids or for people with disabilities that currently, um, some of that goes to the county now, and we don't get it, some of it goes to the state, we don't get it direct. If we're part of a larger urban area, then we get it direct, like Appleton gets theirs direct, and that requires a lot more reporting. Um, and we'd have to track our expenses differently because if we're in a larger urban area, currently, our operating expenses are eligible for that funding. But once you get into a area over two hundred thousand, then you can only use, you're still eligible for funding, but it's only for capital maintenance. So you have to track all that funding separately. Like I said earlier, the state balances it all out, so you'll get the same percentage, but it will require more reporting. Um, so.
Isn't there though, the risk with that, Jim, though, that we might have less say, um, when we combine in? Like, some of the louder voice gets a little more grease?
Right, yeah, that's, that's true. It's kinda like, um, the fortunate part is we do have a good relationship with Valley Transit. Um, but we will then become a smaller player of a larger group, right? So when we have those discussions about, it, it will actually have to sit down with Valley Transit and discuss, all right, well, who gets what? We've come up with a, kind of a formula in concept that they use in, Southeast Wisconsin uses it, where they have like Waukesha, West Bend, Milwaukee sharing, they all get one pool of money and they have to share it. So we've kinda come up with a way to do that. However, you are correct, I mean, it's kinda like, I don't know what a good analogy would be, but maybe Major League Baseball, you got the Yankees and then you got the Brewers. I mean, they try to even out the funding, but in the end, you know, who has a larger voice? So there, that is one of the downsides, and that's, I've argued against it, but I don't know if we're gonna win or not.
I think this time, we're like almost at mandatory requiring for this.
Yeah, the, the hope we have is they change their methodology, the way they do it with the census. They, in two thousand and ten, they used contiguous population. So they, like, looked at the population between Nina and, and Oshkosh, and they counted like along the lake and said, well, that's all one continuous area. And they changed it, this last census, to continuous housing units. So the one person I talked with, East Central, their transportation planner, who's, uh, he's not there anymore, he thought that might change it cause now you have that area on forty-one between Nina and Oshkosh where we don't have housing. So he wasn't sure, and we don't even know yet, East Central doesn't either, what they're gonna do. But everybody thinks it's gonna happen, but there is the chance with the change in methodology, it won't.
One of the, my experiences from two thousand and ten was that we are not in a vacuum by ourselves. Um, my recollection serves me, um, well, uh, two thousand and ten, the reason we got out of it was because of Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania. That sounds weird, but these small systems, and I say small systems, whoever has an influential congressperson is probably where it goes. And somebody in Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania got us thrown into the same category, and we were, we were able to escape this. But the bottom line is, if we can't escape it, our reporting requirements are gonna go up. You'd think it would be less because we'd be part of a bigger group, but actually, they're gonna, we're gonna have more reporting requirements. And I think that's the frustrating part for, for Jim and Steve specifically, because they're the ones who are gonna bear the burden of that. So that's, I think that's the summary of your pitch.
Exactly, and that's why we're asking, for all those reasons, that's the reason we're asking for the management analyst position. Um, you know, I've been here eight years now, and I know a long time before, I don't think we've asked for a position in probably at least twenty years. Um, so we're asking for it for those reasons, to help with the reporting. Um, and like I mentioned earlier, I do have a couple ideas, maybe that would help fund it. I, I mean, it, it's only costs, and I'm saying conservatively, twenty-five percent to the levy. It's, in reality, it's less than that, but comes when you take interest and depreciation and things out. Um, it's gonna be less, and I do think that maybe when we talk to the school district, we ask for some additional funding to help with that, because of all the staff time that's being spent on the school district issues. Um, so that's another possible revenue source. And the reason why I'm saying, like I said earlier, we have all that funding, but then we also get revenue, right? So we get fares, um, we have revenue agreements. Um, you know, I, I do think at some point, we need to talk to the university again to see if they're interested in another type of revenue agreement, um, as well as the school district. Um, but that's why we're asking for that position, for all those reasons. In addition to then, if we do become part of a larger urban area, that's just gonna put us over the edge at that point.
Yeah, lost in all of this, we still have a bus, public transit agency to run and a paratransit service to monitor. Lost an office too, which, uh, you know, it kinda takes the backseat in many ways, but, you know, it's kind of a job in and of itself in addition to all these things that we're talking about.
So that's our, that's our pitch, we're humbly asking for that position. Um, and then, like I said, we can talk about the others out there. So that's kinda the transit budget. We got a couple other ones, but do you have any questions on transit? You know, as always, you know, Stephen, Brian and I, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to us. Steve's gotta go, we actually have our transit conference in Sheboygan, so he's heading over there. So that's, all right, thanks, Steve.
I think this, is this the first time we've seen this broken out like this? That's really helpful, maybe I just didn't notice it before.
Sorry, what are you looking at?
With the revenue, um, with it broken down specifically on page three seventy-seven.
I think Jim told a great story this time, so it, it added depth to it.
Okay, well, no, it's just, uh, it, it's a easier to read format, so whatever you did, maybe it's just format.
Jim, where do you wanna go next?
All right, so then let's go to the transportation, um, tab, which I think is on page.
You are so funny.
One eighty-one, I wanna see.
Which one are you going to?
Transportation, so that's page one eighty-one, so we got electrical.
These are all general funded, that's why we're moving back. First page after the tab.
Um, so the electrical division, um, and then Scooter is here as well. Um, that one is, it's pretty much status quo. Um, there's really no changes to that.
Pretty foolproof.
Um, I'll just, I will highlight a couple of things, you know, we've, uh, we've done over the last couple of years. I think that, um, this year, one of the things that, uh, Electrical Division's currently doing is a lot of these city hall renovations. You see like Mark's office, you see then, um, administrative services offices, a lot of our electricians been involved in that doing a lot of the wiring at city hall. Previously, they did a lot of that at the, um, police station, uh, they worked, yeah, museum. They worked on the temporary relocation of the parks department. Um, so they're doing a lot of, saving the city a lot of money, doing a lot of that work where we would have to hire outside contractors for. Um, in addition, the, we have to improve traffic safety, we've been activating more of the intersections. What that means is going to more of, of vehicle detection, um, which helps us so that we don't have to have the lights in flash. Um, and it'll keep the main line flowing unless the traffic's on the minor area, arterial, or not arterial, but the minor, um, travel direction. Um, they worked on the Riverwalk, extending lighting on Sixth, the South Main intersection's been updated. They've been working on the Algoma Street reconstruction. Um, this next year, they'll continue to work on the parks, and they'll work on the East Ninth Street extension. Um, the only other highlight is we are going to be starting to test solar lighting. So in the Picker Heights subdivision, that'll be a test for some solar lighting, and then we have one other area we were looking at it. So we'll see how that works. I mean, the, the benefit to that area is there's not a lot of tree cover or anything, so we can, um, get the sunlight to power the lights. So that's kinda electrical. Any questions on that?
I always get questions about the, uh, purple LED malfunction lights, anything.
Those are, that's a public service issue, but that, um, as people report them, we report on the public service for a change out. It's a, it's a driver issue. It, in order to make the LEDs work, there's a, it's called a driver. The drivers are, are not, I'll, I'll just say they're not playing nice, so. When, if you see one, um, you know, it, when it gets reported to us, that, we'll report it to the public service to get it. They're not supposed to be. Although a lot of people like the purple, it, it gives off the same amount of light, it's just that your eye perceives it differently, so.
Yep, all right, so then after that, page one eighty-five, we have the sign division. Um, and that, like I said, Brian, he supervises transit maintenance as well as their sign and street painting. Um, some of the things that we've done recently this year is we refreshed a lot of the city's striping, which you've seen. We've got most of it done this year, we were fortunate that we were able to fill our seasonal positions, although late, we were able to do that. Um, they replaced the signs to maintain reflectivity, we're required to do that every ten years. Um, and they've updated and replaced some of the shero markings. Um, as we install new bike lanes, they're usually heavily involved in that, and then they'll be assisting with the South Main Street, uh, that road diet that's coming here. Again, that budget is pretty much status quo. Um, I know with our, um, new, not new, but our accounting, some of the funds have been consolidated. So this one year anyway, it's a little bit harder to compare apples to apples, but just so you know, the, uh, expenses are the same, pretty much. Only thing that, you know, we'll obviously have a little bit of a labor increase once we figure all that out, but that's budgeted in a separate area currently. Questions on signs? All right, if not, the last one we have, and I'm just, I'm trying to get the page number here, but it's the, uh, street lighting fund, which is under the special revenue funds area. Um, and that one too is pretty much status quo. Really, the only, um, expense there is energy, so it's on page two seventeen. That one, some of the newer things are the streetlight layout for Algoma Boulevard. So that's our electricians also staff, the street lighting repairs and installations, and, um, they do all those streetlight layouts. So they did the layout for Algoma Boulevard. Um, we're also, we're gonna be testing some other solar lights at railroad crossing on Oakwood Drive that we've had some requests for.
Which finally came in after almost two years.
And then they'll be working on, like, a lot of people don't realize that, but our staff does most of the streetlight layouts. So Scooter and his guys, they, they'll be working on Wisconsin Street and the other projects this year.
Just a question, so this word test is a little bit scary for railroad crossing lights, um, would.
It's a, it's a good location for us to, to, we've had a couple requests for lighting at, uh, exempt tracks out on, um, Oakwood. In the industrial, well, yeah, in the industrial park area.
So these aren't required, these, this is like us trying out something that's in addition?
Right, we've had some people request because occasionally, when they're loading cars, uh, not so much as before because of the, the transload facility. But when they're, um, when they're running cars back and forth out of BMS, when they're, we have to do things there some, once in a while, those Oakwood tracks are covered. So we, we had a few requests that, the lighting there for when there is a train there. So, uh, again, it's, it's a exempt track, but we figured it's a good spot for us to put solar lighting, uh, to give it. Yeah, yeah, it's still, solar street lighting is, in, in certain parts of the country is, is, uh, you know, they're doing very well with it. But again, we're in the northern climate, so it's kinda gonna be a, a test for us. And I, I worked with a engineer that went to school in Madison, grew up in Minnesota, so he knows our climates, he knows our, uh, you know, he knows that, the, the problems you have with solar in this part of the country. So, um, the system's supposed to, you know, work well, it dims down and comes back to brightness, it's gonna cease motion to help save. So it's gonna be, uh, they're, they're actually the same lights we're gonna be using in the Picker Estates, uh, and those actually finally just came in also. So we're gonna try and get them installed yet this year. So, snow today didn't help. The biggest problem we're really having right now is, uh, believe it or not, getting concrete. You know, when we try to put in bases for these, you know, for these units, you know, we're being told that, you know, concrete's two or three weeks out, even if we call now, so it's hard for us to schedule that. It's, it's kinda weird, I think it's more of a, again, it gets back to an employee shortage. I don't think they have enough drivers to drive trucks to, to deliver concrete. So it's been a challenging summer, actually, so. But we're hoping to get them installed in Picker Estates. But we're hoping to get them installed in Pickard Estates and the two out on Oakwood.
Yeah, so there's not.
By Miles Kimball, by, what is it? What's Miles Kimball called?
Silver Star.
Silver Star.
Yeah, Silver Star. It's out by Silver Star, so those will be the first two we put in.
Yep, and then I'll just finish with, and keep you guys on track here, is just, so I know a lot of you asked me, and I know people keep asking since we're on TV, what's the status of the intersections on Algoma?
Algoma, right now, we're waiting, obviously contractor just poured, I might have a little misinformation, I've been gone for 10 days, so. The contractor poured the basis on Algoma a week ago Thursday, so there's cure time. So when we can get the contractor back to install the signals, then we'll have, we have to schedule with our traffic signal equipment provider, because the two cabinets we're using on Wisconsin and Algoma, and Congress and Algoma are new to us, that they're the newest generation of the traffic signal cabinet, so we're used to doing things hardwired way, where most of this is done programming wise, so once we get them both ready to go, we're going to get our traffic signal rep up here, because they come with training and turn-on assistance, so we're trying to combine them into one. So hopefully, within the next few weeks, we'll have that ready to go.
All right. Thanks. Do you have any other questions? You're on time, so, all right, well, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. We probably have a minute or two to stretch our legs while Kelly and her gang come on up, yeah.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly.
Good morning, everybody. So we'll dive in here to community development, we have just under 50 budgets, so here we go. So a couple things just to start with here. I'm going to go over, I'll be handling assessors, obviously, because that position is vacant, but I'm going to have our staff members, our division heads come in, talk about a few different items, you know, that we want to cover in each budget, and, you know, just kind of go over anything special that we might, you know, want to make sure that you are aware of. So if you have any questions, please let me know, otherwise, we'll dive right into assessors. So that's on page 169 of your booklet here. Looks like quite a few of you are already on that page. So just an update, I mentioned a staffing update. Our city assessor position is still currently vacant. We did interview for that position, but did not receive the candidates that we would have preferred for that position. So I had worked with HR on looking for other options to still, you know, meet state statutes with, you know, all the tasks that the city assessor needs to do. So right now, we are contracting with Tyler Technologies. Tyler Technologies actually does our commercial assessments, and they did do city assessor services for us when the previous city assessor left, and there was a little gap time in there too. So they're very familiar with it, and I currently have a position on the city's website for Assessors Division Manager. So not saying they need to know every single, you know, they don't need to have that Assessor III certification, but there's somebody that can manage the division, you know, be that liaison between Tyler Technologies and the city, and then also, you know, just keep the, you know, the division as itself moving forward. So that's just an update. Unfortunately, it's just, as Jim was saying before me, it's, you know, we're not getting the candidates, and we're looking for the best, you know, case scenario, keep them moving forward. Fortunately, we have a really good staff, they've been here for a long time, and they're doing a great job. So that's the update on the assessor position. I also wanted to talk about the upcoming revaluation. As you see in here, that's a goal for us, we're going to start prepping in 2023 for that. So that will be 2023, 2024 project. So in 2024, that's when, you know, we'll be definitely working with citizens and, you know, trying to help them understand their new value. Early, in 2023, I will start to work with media services. I want to start to do quite a bit of outreach, so folks understand what a revaluation mean, and even if they're, maybe the value goes up, it doesn't mean that your taxes are going to go up that much. So I'm going to try really to get information out there, correct information out there before those notices come out, so folks, you know, can understand what that means when they receive those new values. So that's something that we are working towards with Tyler Technologies, and then, of course, with our staff, and that will be a long process, but it's, it's well overdue. So we're on the clock with DOR, and 2023, we'll start the work in 2024, it will be finalized. Any questions regarding assessors? Those were kind of the big items that I wanted to mention to you.
And we're doing that because we're getting close to the 70% value.
It's actually 90% is when the clock starts.
We're at 70.
Our estimate for 2023 was, I believe, Finance Director Von Gumpel said 71%.
Okay.
So right now, we're about 82%. So you could just see the market and what our values are, it just keeps, keeps that, keeps widening, so we desperately need to fix that, but at the same time, we don't want to rush it, we want to make sure we do it correctly and have that community engagement, so we're still planning for 2024. Any other questions with assessors? Otherwise, we can move on to economic development. That's on page 173. So economic development, we continue to be very busy, and I have Jason Posma, he's our Economic Development Services Manager here. This is his first budget workshop. Jason was hired in December of last year. Many of you know him, but we're continuing to work on quite a bit, quite a few projects, and quite a few redevelopment projects. We have quite a few grants that we're looking at closing and continuing to maintain and going for, which takes a lot of staff time. And we're collaborating with a lot of our community partners on business retention, expansion, and attraction. Jason, you want to talk a little bit about what we're doing with the Aviation Business Park?
Sure. So we're working collaboratively with GoEDC and the airport to continue to market the Aviation Business Park. We had a booth this year at EAA where we spoke with, you know, several, several people about locating in the Aviation Business Park, and we continue to follow up with them. GoEDC and the airport, they're also working on a new marketing package where they're going to send out packages to a bunch of aviation business park site selectors around the country and follow up with them to continue to market that, so. So we're hopeful, we, like I said, continue, we're in discussions right now with a couple of companies that are interested in locating either on the county side or the city side of the Aviation Business Park.
Yeah, so we just, we'll talk about that later when we talk about the taxing for mental districts, but, you know, the Aviation Business Park has been, you know, an area that we've kind of struggled to jumpstart, but we really are moving forward together, which I think is the best way to do it, and we do have multiple inquiries, some pretty good prospects right now, that did come from EAA, so we're continuing to work with them to try to get some increment going in that park to really start establishing it. The other item for community development that I wanted to mention is during our strategic planning sessions, we talked about that expediter role, that we, you know, that was largely, when I started with the city, that was my role as somewhat of the expediter, to help the businesses, you know, get through the process through the city, approval and site planning process as quickly as possible with ease. I'd work with a lot of other departments and agencies to try to mitigate any issues, and it was really just to help staff and to help private developers kind of be a liaison between the two. So we are going to have that expediter position back in economic development. John Zarotti, our former chief building official, will be transitioning to that position. So we did just do interviews for the chief building official last week, so that transition will happen soon, but I think it's going to be a great position, just with the background of Mr. Zarotti's, you know, background, what he did here, and then obviously having him in that role to support city staff and have a pretty good handle on what needs to be done. I think it'll be a great benefit, because honestly, when we're talking with developers, the big thing that they really appreciate, you know, when they come to the city, is we're very upfront about timeframes, timelines, you know, we talk about how long it takes to get through the process, and we really try to keep, you know, strong communication with them. And that is, they, we've gotten, received many compliments, that they appreciate that communication and that being upfront, because we all know time is money. So they really, you know, I think liked the direction that we're going now, and just having Mr. Zarotti as an expediter, I think will be, you know, even, you know, larger asset to the city to have him in that place. So that transition will be happening soon, and we'll have, you know, those services once again in the city.
And I would just add that I would say that the discussions I had with Thaddeus here last week, that was actually the first time I had spoken with last week, that was actually the first time I had spoken with the folks from Theta Care, but they appreciated that approach with being an expediter to making sure, because now that they've made public on this, they want to go. They want to go fast now, even though Kelly was working on it for two years, and Jason's been working on it since the day he arrived. Now that it's here, they really do want to, they want to work as quickly as possible to get that open by, I think, you know, 2024. So, and I know John will do a great job in helping do all that expediting that's necessary.
Yes, excellent. Were there any other questions with economic development? Otherwise, with Jason still here, I'm going to jump around in the budget, because fortunately ours doesn't go in an order here, but I just wanted to jump to a few items. The first one is our Community Development Special Grant, so that's on page 247 of your So this is a fund that we have, and it's really a pass-through fund for all the grants that we receive. If our grants are, you know, not part of a tax incremental district, or we're getting it, you know, for a developer that will be passed through the city, that's what this fund is for. So budgeting is somewhat difficult, because we don't always know what, you know, grants will go for in the future, but we do our best. But as you see, we have some active ones right now. We typically receive one WDC grant a year. We have an EPA grant. We're already working on our next EPA grant to help with some of the environmental cleanup in our central city areas. But this is, like I said, just a pass-through to account for the money, the reimbursements, and then obviously, when the time comes, to make sure that they're deposited in the correct accounts. If there's no other questions with that, I would ask that we jump to the, let's do the Industrial Park, that's page 381. This is our Industrial Park Land Fund, and this, again, is our fund that the city has used previously for acquiring land. So when we sell land, typically, this is reimbursed then to make the city whole. So I can let Russ or Jennifer discuss more the, you know, the financial aspect, if you have any questions on it. But really, this is just our fund that when we sell property, it's banked back in here to reimburse the city for the cost we had for the initial acquisition.
Yeah. When we buy the land, it comes out of this fund as well, so it's pretty much a mini land holding company.
Yep. And then if you want, if we want to go to page 425, that's our RDA. This is another somewhat similar kind of pass-through account. Obviously, the RDA is under the city umbrella, it's somewhat of a separate entity, but the city does fund it. So the city funds activities or in their CIP for acquisition, and obviously, sometimes we use CDPG funds also for blight removal, and this is a fund that it passes through the fund also, just so we can keep track of how much funding the RDA is actually spending.
Question, Kelly. Over the years, I don't know, I've probably gotten three or four times the spreadsheet that shows the list of all of our properties that are taking, are off the tax rolls, either they're nonprofit or the city acquired, you know, for development. Is that available to council for an update? Not, obviously, right now. It just occurred to me that it's been a while since we looked at that. Are we trending up or down on that?
I could.
For a while, we were trending significantly up.
Yeah, no, we can update that and share that tax exempt list of all the properties in the city and share that list with council, certainly. All right, and we're going to jump back to page 283. This is our Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund. This is our fund. If you recall, that we had some large tax incremental districts that closed, and the council long-range finance had the four site to, page 284, or 82, page 283, page 284. They put the, when those TIDS closed, they used the funding that the TIDS had left over and created a revolving loan fund. So Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation administers this fund for us. So again, sometimes it's difficult to, you know, budget how much do we think that they're going to spend on loans, you know, in the next year, but we kind of put our best guess down. And then also, you know, we are in constant communication with our finance department, with GoEDC and community development staff. They don't have all of those funds in their bank account, they just have a small amount. So sometimes if they do issue larger loans, they'd have to come to the city, and we would have to issue a check to GoEDC to be able to loan out. So the fund is actually doing great. And in probably the seven years or so that we've had it, I think we've only had one default, and they actually, the business was bought by somebody, and, you know, the people are still employed there. So the loan was defaulted, but the business didn't close, those folks are still employed. So it is what it is, but we know that this is gap financing, it's a little bit riskier. So I think, I would say that this is very successful. And we've also used some of the funding as match funds for other grants and loans, you know, that we've received from the state. So we've really tried to leverage our funds as much as possible for the capital catalyst. Funds are for three rounds, and I know that they're looking at the fourth round. So we're really challenging GoEDC to be creative with the funds and look at different ways, look at what the gaps are in the community, you know, where we need the funding, you know, when they're hearing folks. So something we are looking forward to is more, you know, women, minority-owned businesses and funding for entrepreneurs. So those are some of the goals that we have. And then also, maybe even any funds to support our downtown businesses, too. So like I said, overall, I think we've done a great job with this. GoEDC, their committee that reviews these are very good stewards of our money, and they do a great job, and I think we're all pretty pleased with how it's going. Okay, if nobody has questions, we can move forward to TIF. That's on page 295. There is a TIF summary. So just a few items on this summary here. This is just kind of an overview of everything. I just want to make a few comments on it. For TID 13, it does show a projected negative balance at termination. We believe that's incorrect. The TIDS actually can be opened an additional year, so that one will close with a positive cash balance. As I mentioned before, TID 23 are Southwest Industrial Park and TID 26 are Aviation Business Park. Those are the two parks where we borrowed to put the improvements in, the sanitary water, sewer, roads, and unfortunately, we don't have, you know, the private investment in there, you know, building to create that increment. So those are ones that we continually work with others on, just to watch. We have options as far as when we get closer to those TIDS. Those are both industrial TIDS, so they are a 20-year TID. So as you see, TID 23 closes in '29, and Aviation is '33. So like I said, we have options for there to extend it, but those are ones we are continuously monitoring and trying really hard to sell land in that area and get some increment. The other one I wanted to mention is TID 36. It says we're going to be $6 million, $6.9 million at closing in the hole. That's also incorrect. Merge is, as you see, Brio was just built, so we don't have the increment showing on the spreadsheet yet, so the spreadsheet, I think, was used, just showed the Pago, but did not show the actual increment that is going to be realized each year. So that one, we will also be fine. It's a Pago, and if anything, it's, we're going to have a positive cash balance, because it's not projected to go the full 27 years, and I think they're only using 90% of the increment also.
These are pretty much mathematical projections, and that doesn't tell the whole story, obviously, the one with Merge, because it's pure Pago, you know, that'll settle itself out. I don't want to sugarcoat that the Southwest Industrial Park and the Aviation Business Park, especially with their closings in 2033, we got to keep an eye on those. With that said, there's also good stories in a lot of these, and the one I would like to point out is TIF number 35, because Kelly and I have talked about that. We're very pleased with the progress on that and where we think we could be probably in five years.
Yeah, TID 35 is actually the Oshkosh Ave Corridor. TID 34 is strictly the Oshkosh Corporation Global Headquarters Parcel, but we had the foresight to say, okay, if we build, if this, you know, global headquarters is built here, most likely the Oshkosh Ave Corridor is going to be redeveloped. And we kind of, we're seeing that already even before the Oshkosh Corporation project came. So a TID was created, and as you see out there, all the new businesses and the redevelopment that's happened, we're collecting quite a bit of increment. In our project plan, we planned for the increment to be used for the corridor and rehab for some houses out there, and then also the Sawyer-Oshkosh Ave intersection reconstruction. So we're really, we're looking at our fund balance, and just with some of the grant opportunities that are out there right now, you know, would we have enough for a match? So we're kind of monitoring that situation, because as we all, I'm sure, could agree, it'd be great to get that intersection reconstructed, to straighten it out. I think a lot of folks in the residents in the city would be pleased about that.
And I think that's as early, I think we could look at that in as early as five years.
So just a question about some of the more underperforming ones, you know, looking at a few of these. There was just a press conference this week by the Dental Partnership with Senator Baldwin that I attended there. There's like $600,000 for an expansion, and I guess they're moving into City Center.
Okay.
So how do things like that play into some of these underperforming, like the Morgan District or Granary or City Center with some of these new things happening?
Sure.
Good news, I mean.
Yeah, so Sydney City Center is on here, that's TID number 17. So obviously, you know, that one is, looks to be closing in 2028, but if there's additional investment in the city center itself, when we assess it, we'll see that, you know, those vacant spots are not filled, and we'll incorporate that into the value. So in theory, then the value would be harder or higher, excuse me, and we'll receive more increment. So that should increase the increment in there.
Does it make a difference with, it's more about the lease payment, right? It's not necessarily whether or not it's a nonprofit, or is that impacting?
Well, if you're leasing it, it's still technically owned.
Right.
By a for-profit entity, so we should still be fine with that. Yeah, they look at the lease payment, you know, how long is that lease, what the payment is, how much space are they taking up?
Unlike dark store with the big box.
Right. So like I said, that should be a positive impact for that TID.
Okay.
Yeah, and I wouldn't categorize City Center as an underperformer at all. It's actually, the City Center, TIF 17's doing very well.
Yeah, and I understand that, you know, you might, under the projected fund balance for the end of this year, you might see some in the negative, but it really is to look at what, when it's projected to close, what's it going to be? Because we might, we have debt payments on some of them. I have a list here of, you know, we have debt payments, and then, you know, when it closes, that's the important thing, to make sure that it is a positive cash balance. And sometimes the Pagos will end, you know, the city's obligation for that, so. And you mentioned the Morgan District. We don't have a development agreement or anything with the Morgan District, so there's really nothing there, so.
Another good example is the Beach Building, because of the, it looks like it's going to be imminently closed based on the projected sale to Christine Anne Center. You can see in that one where it's got a fund balance of $62,000. That's a pretty basic pay-as-you-go TIF. It's performing, I mean, it's basically meant to zero out pretty easily, so, and that'll zero out quite fine even if the whole sale with Christine Anne goes through.
I guess, question, I mean, is that the ultimate goal here, to zero these out at closing? Or are we trying to see this as a revenue stream?
Um, yes and no. Sometimes with the Pagos, like City Manager Roloff said, they might be receiving 90 or 95% of the increment, depends with the development agreement stated. So really, then, our goal is to make sure administratively, we have our costs covered. But for some, that maybe we had, like, public infrastructure costs included, where they're only getting 75%, we want to make sure that in addition to the admin and our DOR fees, that, you know, we have the costs or the funds available to help pay for those costs. But there are some where, you know, potentially the TID, you know, our Pago obligation is only for 15 years, and we would still have another 12 years to collect increment. So that would be, you know, up to the council's discretion, okay, if the obligation is completed. The one thing that I, and we'll talk about this in a little bit, we want to make sure we would keep it open for that additional year to collect that affordable housing, that increment for the affordable housing activities. And then when the TID is completed, it's broken into, you know, four different percentages for the four taxing jurisdictions, and then we send a check to them.
Thank you.
Yep. If there are no other questions, I think we'll switch gears and move to inspections. Okay. John, you want to come up? Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, you referred to him as former, don't boom out the window just yet, he's got a lot of value, so.
No, no, we won't let him go quite yet. All right, let's start with inspections. This one is all over the place, too. This is our inspections division. It is an enterprise fund, so that was done, I think goodness, probably about five years or so ago, and the fund is doing quite well. We want to make sure the fund has a rainy day fund, you know, to make sure that it can account for, if, you know, there's a recession or something, we can still pay for staffing and the office needs, but the fund is doing quite well. And I think that, you know, the inspections division is still doing excellent with turnaround with inspections and plan reviews, and it's been our busiest year. I think we're on record to have another record year this year. So, John, do you want to talk a little bit about, you know, anything in the division that council should be aware of?
I guess, you know, some of the KPIs that you guys had put out there for us years ago, we're meeting all of those. All of our inspections, you know, the state has given us the thing to say, we want these completed in 40 hours or less. We're completing 100% of our inspections in less than 24 hours, and the Fender Callan is ready. Our plan review times, you know, years ago, that was probably out in the couple-month range, even at the city. At the state level, it's probably out anywhere from six to 12 weeks. We're doing our commercial plan reviews in less than five business days. We've had a really good year this year, coming up with the very few lots that we do have available in the city for new homes. We're, when this was written, probably in August, I think it was, we were at 59 new home starts. So a lot of that came from the ninth Ave, from the Evergreen Development of that there. And I guess the other thing is, is when people come to the corner for a permit, we're seeing that the permits are issued 80% of the time on their first visit. So there are going to be some that come with, you know, absolutely no information, and we need some sort of plan. Unfortunately, we do have to send them away, but we do have a lot of educational materials out there online for them to access before they come in, and so if they do see some of these things, or they're doing a phone call even before coming in, we can know where those things are at, so they can gather all the information to bring that to us when they're coming for the inspection, or for the plan review at the corner, permit at the corner.
And really, you know, John mentioned that, you know, we are certified by the state to review plans. That's a huge thing. When we tell contractors or developers that, they're like, oh, wow, that's great. So it's just another tool in our economic development toolbox that we do have that, you know, gives developers a little more certainty of the timing of, you know, when the plans could be approved, and, you know, just a little more flexibility, since it's, you know, it could be a six-week swing in the difference between the two.
Yeah, I was recently on a legislative committee for Plan Review Services and Commercial Inspections at the state. I had to testify there, they asked me to testify, and they did compliment Oshkosh on saying, you know, that's really good for Oshkosh to have that service. That's letting your developers know, hey, Oshkosh is really trying, like, they want you here, like, they're even going to have this expedited inspection service, so you don't have to worry about that waiting, if you're ready to be, like, shoveling the dirt and ready to go as soon as you get to Oshkosh. and ready to go as soon as you get to Oshkosh. So I thought that was a great thing, that Oshkosh can provide that service.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're getting a lot of positive feedback, I think, as New York development over the last few years is starting to kind of replace some of that older reputation, and so, well done.
I'd agree. You know, we get a lot of out-of-state positive feedback and from some of the larger construction companies, Myron and those groups, and some nice reception is hard to change, even if it is 15 years later. But we're working on it, and one project at a time, and I think we have a great group down there. And just, you know, some of the improvements we've made with, you know, lean processes and going more electronic, it's just, we're, we're really trying to kind of, we'll say, keep up with the times with everybody, so it's going well.
Could I just ask a question, though? Where in here are the, I see we have the line item for the complaint-based housing inspection. Where are those complaints, like, numbers-wise trending and/or, obviously, we have not been able to really do the other program, the mandatory inspection program? How are things with rental inspections overall? Are we, like, seeing those calls come in more or less as the rentals are less available, I guess?
Sure.
Can we talk about that now?
Well, let's just wait.
Sure.
Your first, you had asked kind of two separate items. We do get quite, still quite a few complaints, just for property maintenance, work without a permit, you know, whatever it may be. Largely, would you agree with me, John, a lot of those come through See Click Fix now?
We are seeing a lot of those on See Click Fix. Probably, I would say, probably at least double our numbers. So whatever the number is, like, probably more than half of those have come through See Click Fix.
Yeah, so folks are really taking advantage of, you know, having it right in their hands and being out and see something, See Click Fix and send it to us. So we're working on that and obviously working with our fellow departments to make sure, you know, those are accounted for. Still receive calls and emails, too, for complaint-based and, you know, sending folks out there. But for the rentals, and I guess we, that, there's actually our own fund for the rental inspections that we can shift over to if folks want to. That's on page 271 of your budget booklet. And that is something that, you know, we did want to talk about today because unfortunately, we're not receiving participation, as much participation as we would like. I'd also say that we were not receiving enough participation to fund the program. Right now, the program is being funded just with, from the general budget, just because we are not receiving the revenue. And we, as you see in here, we fund, you know, two employees, but just 5% of their wages. But we're not receiving the revenue. Our last batch, couple of months that were sent out, we sent out, I believe, 394 letters to rentals and only received calls for, from 10 people for inspections. So, you know, the program that the city envisioned and how we envisioned it to, you know, work is not reality right now. Obviously, some of, you know, how we anticipated to fund it, you know, with the state statute changes, we're not able to. So staff has really been looking at other ways that we could be more proactive and reach out to folks that would want inspections. And some of that is, you know, we've had discussions, you know, kind of instead of the stick where we send you fees, should it be more of a carrot? And look at our programs and try to, you know, say, okay, if there are, you know, violations, you know, could, you know, we have a loan or something like that, just to try to make sure that, you know, the rental units in Oshkosh are safe. John, anything you want to add to that?
No, that's probably all it is. I mean, you know, and we do want to encourage, you know, any tenants in Oshkosh, you know, if we do go away from this kind of volunteering, sending out a notice to do it. Just to remind, remind you that you can always come to the Housing Inspector, Inspections Division, and let us know that you've got some concerns. Or even if you're a landlord and you've got some questions about, you know, I've got some really bad tenants, is there anything I can do? And we can kind of point them in the right direction there. We don't give them advice, but, you know, where to go for some, you know, legal stuff that the state has on their website.
So the feedback that I'm hearing from a few people in the central city is the same issue that we had when we started this program, what was that, 2016, 17? And that is, they're showing me pictures, they're asking me to look at things, and they're saying, but, and I ask them, have you called City Inspections or will you call City Inspections? And the same story is true today as was in 2016, and that is, they are afraid that A, they'll be required to pay for it themselves, or B, that they will have retaliation from a landlord, and they have no place to go. And especially true with Section 8. So there's still that fear of having, I mean, folks with improper, like, stove accommodations, flooding basements, you name it, it's still the same today. So I guess we haven't really been able to implement this program the way that we have, but what assurances can those tenants have that if they do come to us, that they are not going to end up homeless as a result of making that, you know, that report?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only thing that we could say there is, you know, there are some legal things that are out there that do protect the tenants where they, you know, have paid up on, they're paid up on their rent, all the utilities are paid, they're not violating any part of their lease, and now they come because they said their basement's flooded or the heat doesn't work or whatever complaint they have, and that's the only thing that's there, and now they're getting evicted? I guess that might be a red flag for someone to say.
But the burden is on them to get that legal assistance, right, to enforce it, sure.
But that's kind of what we've been talking about. You know, we have two different parties we need to reach out to. We need to reach out to those tenants and try to be more proactive with giving them information to say, okay, you know, if there is an issue, here are the resources you can call, or these are the things you can do. But then at the same end, try to work with those landlords to say, okay, you know, you might have some violations, is there something we can do to help you with that? And, you know, like I said, it's kind of a struggle, it's definitely a balance, but we want to, you know, encourage people to, you know, make their buildings code compliant because we know it's good for the renters and it's good for the landlords, and it's just good for the city as a whole. So, you know, as far as this program, it takes a lot of staff time and, like, hours to do it. So it's something that the city is, you know, we're looking at how, how we can maybe, you know, retool it to try to reengage. But right now, it's not, you know, it's not providing the impact that we had hoped it would. So if there's any other questions with that, otherwise, we can start to shift gears to Waits and Measures, which is the third fund that inspections monitors. That's page 104. Oh, I'm sorry. 401. I was reading it backwards. 401. So Waits and Measures is, you know, it's a task that the city brought in, oh goodness, probably six, seven years now. The state was doing it for the city, but now we are outperforming those inspections. And I think we have pretty good compliance to make sure all of the, you know, scales, gas stations, you know, there's a lot of, you know, things that we look at with businesses to make sure that they're accurate for our residents, you know, visiting those stores. John, anything to add on that?
You know, we've got a new employee in here as of this year. I guess there was a pretty big educational curve with some of the business owners and the inspector, when we kind of started this back-up in-house, if you will, with the city doing it instead of the state. I think that inspector did a great job kind of educating those business owners as to why he was there, why this was going on. And the transition now with the new inspector has been really smooth. I haven't heard any complaints from any business owners this time around with a new inspector coming through. And, you know, overall, everything is really good with the city when they do these verifications, so that's a really good thing for the business owners knowing that they're not shorting their customers and for the customers of Oshkosh knowing they're not being shorted by a business in Oshkosh.
Any other questions on that? So that's all we have for inspections, economic development, and assessors. So I know we have a break in 15 minutes. Do we want to get started with some planning, or do we want to take a break now?
Keep going.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anna, could you text Mark to ask him to come up? Thank you. I'll get started here. Let's talk about the bid. That's page 201. So the bid obviously collects assessments, special assessments, through the businesses that participate in the Business Improvement District in our central city. They do have, you know, their own board, and they do set the budget, their own operating budget, which will be coming to council. I believe the next meeting on October 25th, you'll be looking at that. So they, you know, use the funds that they have in their, you know, that they receive from assessments, and then they do receive donations from businesses to help fund some of their other activities, such as, like, you know, the lights you might see in the Christmas trees at Opera House Square Park. So we do have to have, you know, a budget for them in here so we can, obviously, you know, do all their, complete all their bills and everything, but they are, they are proposing to use some of their money from reserves for their budget this year, but they do have that funding in reserves, that they are able to transfer that over.
Do you know what their total reserves are?
Anna, do you happen to know?
Russ can find it. It's in the, it's not, it's not a ton of money.
No, I'd probably say 40,000.
I was thinking the same, yeah. I was thinking the same number.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question? Maybe City Manager or Kelly, you can. I see that we started doing implementation of Roger Brooks' study, and that's on the goals. Did we actually ever vote on that as a council?
Well, it wasn't done for the city. And it, I mean, it was a convention and visitor bureau plan.
No, but I mean, did we ever, as a council, vote on implementation of that study?
No. The council did ask me to keep it on, and I may have suggested it, but the council was okay putting it on Status of Council directives because it wasn't, because it wasn't specifically initiated by the city, and it, it wasn't necessarily saying the city needs to do certain things. It was more of a suggested, suggestions, because it wasn't like a plan that, say, the Sawdust District is. It was one person's observations, that's, people have taken those recommendations and run with it and done different things. Wayfinding signage is just one example. Wayfinding signage in a lot of communities was done by the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So it doesn't necessarily say that, but the council did say, keep an eye on it, and Kelly's provided staffing or herself to basically be in the discussions. But that's kind of what led to the, the study that.
House Cillavina is complaining for us. Yeah, so like I said, it's not specific recommendations that we have to do, but it's just, it's ideas that we think, hey, this, this would be a good thing to do. And I think quite a few different organizations are taking different pieces from those recommendations and looking at completing some of those.
So for the 2023 goals, it looks like, as to the bids, budget at least here, how much time does that look like? What does that look like time-wise for next year, for our staff?
Um, I mean, it kind of ebbs and flows. I mean, I would say maybe a couple hours a week, if that. It's not, you know, we have a bid liaison that, you know, takes minutes at the meetings, is kind of that liaison between, like, the bid and city staff. You know, so we have a few folks, and obviously, we can all agree that, you know, development in our central city is very important, so, you know, we try to support them in any ways we can, but if we do have, you know, restrictions or it's too much, too time-consuming, you know, we do have to let them know that. So they are looking at options of way that they can expand their services and what they're doing, and there's some different, you know, they're looking at different area, other bids in the area, like Appleton and Green Bay, and, you know, how they can maybe enhance what they do.
Yeah, as we understand, yeah, absolutely, the development's important. But the reason I bring that up is because it was also brought up by another board or commission that has, like, an official plan that this body voted and approved a number of years ago, and they were also talking about the limitations on staff time to be able to do any implementation, and that's why we have the sustainability, I think, manager position on the enhancement list. So, you know, just kind of trying to understand, like, who's getting what?
Yeah.
I would say that your, your observation is valid, but not necessarily in the direction of community development. They provide minor administrative support because Jessica Midle is funded, you know, the hundred, through the bid, that 125,000, that's really the bulk. That goes to the bid, that pays for Jessica's salary and everything. The bigger challenge isn't so much the demand on, I'll say Jeff now is the, is the person who, who's there for those purposes. Because it's a public entity, we want to make sure that that public entity notices and does all that. But the bid also asks a lot of our Parks Department and those types of things. That's probably more of a challenge, and that's where I think, you weren't necessarily going there, but you.
Well, we have that shared position, right, that we're partially funding. That's between the bid and parks, although I feel like it also relates to some of the bid. It's all very.
And the Community Foundation's funding part of that, and the CVB, if I recall correctly. So, but there's other things that they ask for that go beyond even that, and that's probably a bigger challenge than anything that's put on Kelly. And if anything, Kelly comes to me and says, just to make you aware, they're asking about this, this, and this. It's not necessarily taxing on Jeff or any of Kelly's staff, it's really more taxing on some of the other departments. And we have to push back and say, we have the resources for the position that was jointly approved, but we don't have that much more. Scooter is asked a lot of things, so it's more on the downtown infrastructure side than it is anything from community development staff.
Yeah, no, I would agree with that. You had mentioned sustainability, and obviously, we do have a staff liaison that does provide assistance, but their background isn't sustainability. You know, they're a planner. So of course, you know, they're engaged, they do as much as they can, but, you know, not to implement the actual plan. So that's kind of, we have, there's a little difference. So that's the bid. They're actually going to be presenting at the October 25 council meeting, just a presentation of kind of what's going on, you know, with their tasks and their initiatives, and then, of course, we'll have the operating budget on that meeting for you also.
No talk of them coming back to plugging in that 15,000 towards parking anytime, I'm guessing.
A question was raised before about fund balance for the bid. On our books right now, at the end of '21, we had 86, almost 87,000 dollars.
What Kelly said plus what I said.
Yeah, there you go. All right.
Yeah, I would say a bigger question, the bid probably will bring up, they'll bring up DORA.
Oh, I'm sure.
And I said I would not meet with them until the DORA season was over, which isn't until the end of the month.
Right.
So it'll be within a few days, they've asked for a meeting. And I said, well, you're going to have to wait until November 1st, so we're having the meeting on November 2nd.
So with that, if we want to switch over to planning, so planning, their budget is on page 175, or, excuse me, 177. So Planning Division has been quite busy this year, and I'll let Mark talk about it a little bit here, some of the, you know, the things they've done. And we do have a couple of budget enhancements in here that we'll also discuss. And then, kind of to go off of that, we'll talk about some of the housing, CDPG funds and everything after that. But Mark, do you want to talk a little bit about what you guys have been up to and what you're planning to do?
Yeah, talk a little bit about some of the highlights of the 2022 accomplishments. Obviously, the big one is probably the continued implementation of the Sawdust District Master Plan, working with the. working with the T-Wall Development, some other properties along the self-managed corridor that we've been working with, potential redevelopment options, the block between Seventh and Eighth. So spending a lot of time working through that implementation. In conjunction with that, you'll also see on the goals for 2023, is we are working with a consultant right now to take that Sawdust District Master Plan that we did and actually turn it into a state code compliant redevelopment plan to give the city and council some of the authorities and the regulatory information that comes along with an actually adopted redevelopment plan instead of just a master plan documented previously. So that should even further assist the city in bringing that redevelopment of the Sawdust District to kind of the goal we had there. We're actually hoping to have that finished up here very early in 2023. We did recognize, or excuse me, adopted our eighth neighborhood plan for the historic Jackson Street. And we're almost finished with our ninth. We're currently working with Congress Field on finishing their neighborhood plan. So you should see that in 2023. And I know we had GoHNI in just a few meetings ago at council talking about some of the stuff they're doing. Really, an active year on neighborhood associations. We had three new recognized neighborhoods within the 2022 calendar year. So we're really starting to grow out some areas of our community that didn't have recognized neighborhood associations previously. Talking a little bit of 2023, some of our goals. I already mentioned the Sawdust District redevelopment plan that we're finalizing. A longstanding project that we've been working on for years is an update to the Winnebago County Airport zoning ordinance. We hosted our first informational public meeting last Wednesday here at City Hall to go over some of those proposed changes for the county's airport zoning ordinance. Got a lot of good feedback. Had about a dozen people, took about thirty, forty phone calls previous to it about that. And, and now we're going to be working with the county towards actual adoption of that ordinance. Because it's a county ordinance and not a city ordinance, ultimate authority of that approval will be through the county. And we're looking at going to the Airport Aviation Committee here in November and hopefully in December, starting their land use and planning and zoning committee with ultimate adoption sometime hopefully in January. So that, that update really will help, give us some greater flexibility in looking at redevelopment in the airport area. The old code was a little odorably destructive. This new update provides an avenue for some additional development in the area. And then, as I mentioned a little bit, working on a ninth neighborhood plan to continue focusing on our neighborhoods and improving them.
Just a question. So I'm not seeing in the 2023 goals implementation of the housing study listed. Is that just kind of assumed?
I, I would say staff's just taking that one and running with it on, on all levels. We talked a little bit earlier this year about some of the zoning updates that everyone's working on. Staff's just kind of incorporated that one into our given work plan as it's something we have to do after the time that was spent. So I wouldn't say it's, it's definitely a goal we're going to continue. But we've just said that's, that's a priority that we're going to do.
It looks like you're going to be down a housing specialist?
So...
Or is that being moved?
Yeah.
Yes and no. It's coming out of the planning budget. It's actually funded through the Community Development Block Grant Revolving Loan Fund. So we're just more accurately reflecting that in the budget next year is that position now shows up in there, even though they'll still be within the Planning Division staff. We're just showing them located in their actual funding source.
Got it. Thank you.
Mark, do you want to talk about your budget enhancements?
Love to. So we do have, there's actually three budget enhancements I want to touch on today. Two of them show from your packet from planning. And then one that comes from another department, but I want to give my plug for it. So we'll start with that one. IT is requesting a new position for an additional GIS technician in the city. This is something, is a lot of the GIS data and work that typically take place is with, is within planning. And we get a lot of requests of our GIS staff to help all divisions throughout the city.
All departments, all divisions?
Police, fire, public works, parks. We help Mr. Roloff's office when he adds up. So we're helping GIS across the city. And really, we're spread a little thin on the GIS side of things. The goal from that position is to bring in a more of an entry level position that can take some of the basic work off of the other GIS staff that the city has in various departments. And then that let those staff focus on more higher end tasks that are better suited for their talents.
Yeah, unfortunately, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just going to ask. So would this level position be suitable? For example, being that GIS was my minor, UW Ashkosh GIS, like student internship, apprenticeship type thing that we can grow them in and hang on to them in some way?
Yeah, the goal here, we have an angel coming in, a younger individual, or not necessarily young, but, but an angel position that can help with kind of the data collection, analysis input, that basic map making. And let the high end analysis be done by some of the more senior staff.
So the seventy-five thousand, that seems more like a mid to upper level rage? Maybe I'm missing something?
It might be including benefits and... Okay, it's wage and benefits. So, I mean, that would probably be if it was in the upper 50s, lower 60s. But, I mean, that's, that's for an entry level position. That is probably a fair assessment. And then it looks like they also have in here, you know, the, the software that they would need and computer and then any office space. So I'd probably say that's a fair amount for an entry level GIS because it is a technical position. And unfortunately, due to a retirement and a staff person moving on to a different position up in engineering, they also helped us with GIS. And we just haven't gotten, you know, those folks back. So it really came to light this year where all of a sudden we had all these requests that they, you know, these other positions just, you know, did those tasks. And all of a sudden, we have to do them. So it really is going to help the city improve our GIS capabilities to, you know, which helps all departments incorporate it into our, you know, systems and programs and computers and, and just really realize the value of it. So we would ask for your support with that position because it is important compared to other cities our size. We are understaffed. You know, we mentioned two GIS people. I'd say it's probably more one and a half because Jeff Now in our office does GIS, but he also is a planner. And you see him up here on PC. And he does CSMs and subdivisions and plans.
Bid, we spoke...
He does bids, so that's not his full-time position. And really, Zach up in IT is focused on more of the overall system. So we just wanted to, to discuss it because it does impact our office quite a bit.
I was just wondering too, just kind of, this is in general, I guess, as we're talking about different enhancements, different positions, or recruiting and that. And maybe this will come in with, with Mr. Fitzpatrick later. But are we seeing some of the challenges of some of our either technical or other potentially remote working positions? You know, I know there's been a lot of discussion about trying to appeal to folks who are wanting those flex arrangements. Is that happening throughout your department or other departments? And like I said, maybe it's more of a John question.
It's probably an appropriate question when HR's up there.
Okay, all right.
You want to talk about your other two enhancements, Mark?
Yeah, so two other enhancements. First, I think Mayor, you had mentioned this a little while ago. The Sustainability Advisory Board has put in a recommendation and forwarded on to council that the city looks at hiring a sustainability manager and trying to fund it for one year with the goal of creating a kind of self-funding, self-sustainable position. You know, we have a sustainability advisory plan and the Sustainability Advisory Board that we have limited staff time, I think Kelly mentioned this a little while ago, to help with that. And really, we're not able to do as much towards maybe the implementation of some of those plans as we would like, given the limited amount of staff time. So the Sustainability Advisory Board is asking that the city look at funding that position for one year. Essentially, then giving that position, there's a lot of grant opportunities out there presently on sustainable efforts. And they're hoping that by creating this position and funding it for the first year, that individual could help find funding further their long-term employment, but also really start to take that plan and implement it and move it forward.
And I'll just say, three years ago, I had a meeting with Mayor Gunrick and their Resiliency Coordinator, which is somewhat similar, a little more specific. And they, they've been successful with that, with the, getting the grants to continue the funding that, to help offset that. And it's really moved them further along. So it's an interesting prospect.
On the enhancement pack, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
On the enhancement package though, I, I noticed that that is, is listed as being on the levy, even though it's meant to be one-time funding? Is that correct? For the Sustainability Manager enhancement?
It's, it's listed as, is it listed as a one-time?
Well, that's, it's being described as a one-time.
I thought it was a...
So that would be like an LTE, right?
Was to, within a year, hopefully be able to find funding, maintain the position after that.
I thought it was a permanent position.
Yeah, it's intended to be a permanent position. But I think the, the idea is that within a year, their, their hope would be that they could find permanent funding.
Got it.
But that's a, that's not a guarantee.
Are you aware of any kind of, at a regional level, support for this kind of work for municipalities rather than specific to local capacity for that? Or, I don't know.
You know, we haven't explored that option. It is something we have discussed a little bit. Like if we need sustainability, you know, help with implementing our plan, other, other communities out there that are doing the same thing? And would it make sense to go together as one? Or even a county or something like that? So we have talked about, we haven't done a, a huge, you know, research into it.
I mean, we can...
Or is this something we can ask East Central? You know, is that something to request from their work plan as regards to a, like a, you know, specific set? As, as Councilmember Erickson's pointing out, it's a regional concern, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's another option. So I think depending what would happen, we would start to look at those, you know, other options to, to see what we can to start implementation of the plan.
Okay, and last one. So as we spoke several months back, as we were starting to begin implementation of the housing study, was that discussion on the inequities of how we currently do parkland fees and parkland dedication? How if you're a developer who has subdivided property, you're subject to those fees. If you're a developer that doesn't have to subdivide a property, you're not subject to those fees. So staff met with Parks Department and legal to try to dig it in, what our options are to, to look at really starting to improve our parkland fees and get a more equitable solution across the board of how those are done. And looking in it, Wisconsin State law is very specific upon how parkland dedication and impact fees are supposed to be done. And, and discussing with legal, planning, community involvement in parks, we really feel it would be in our best interest to consult this out. It is a very technical requirement in the state law about how you go about determining what your fees should be as long as the requirement, as well as the requirements of how they are spent. So I said, we believe that it would be probably in the city's best interest to look at consulting this out. There are a number of companies that specialize in these in making sure you meet your state law requirements when it comes to both parkland impact fees and parkland dedication fees and requirements. So we're asking that we potentially, that we look at funding a study to get us brought in line with other communities and also make sure we're compliant with what we're doing.
Are there any questions on that, on those two enhancements?
Yes, same question on the impact study. It's listed on the levy right now as, as it's asked. Might be something that could theoretically be done with our surplus?
That's not out of the question.
It's a ring endorsement, Mark.
No, no, no. I was, as you were, as Kelly was talking about, I was like, I was anticipating a question like that. So, no, Russ and I haven't talked about it. Russ was being more pensive about it. I was just like, okay, I'm looking at Russ's face, looking at Kelly's face, and that's the composite answer you get. But, yeah, it's not out of the question.
And I guess, do you see that, Mark, as a Director Lyons, as a, something that long-term would, would bring in more money than it's costing?
Yeah, looking at how we stack up compared to similar sized communities and what they're doing, we are on kind of the deficient side of, of what we're doing for parkland impact fees, which right now we don't do at all, and how we do our dedication. So I think it would bring us more in line. And I think it also would help with solve some of the parkland issues that we're presently facing, both with funding of actual park development, as well as parkland impact fees are, are those paid development fees to actually implement your park plan, as well as just making sure we're meeting our, our needs of the community in terms of how much parkland we have.
And obviously, this, if the plan would go forward, it would be coordinated with Parks Director Maurer's, you know, corp update, which I think he's also requesting.
Can you remind me or remind us roughly, how much are we bringing in annually on the dedication fees currently?
I would have...
Roughly.
Russ has a page for that, so.
I didn't get into it.
I didn't know where it was.
Okay. It's not a lot. Because, I mean, all these apartments that we're seeing, if they don't have to divide or combine their parcels, we don't get any, any, you know, fees off of that.
There's a definite inequity there because some do and some don't. And that should be because of some little technicality.
But I don't disagree with that. We've had discussions, and I do agree that there should be some, a more level playing field for the developments that are currently happening here in town, especially when, by and large, it's, it's massive and large-scale developments in the central city compared to single-family homes on the west side.
Right.
But as, Mark's term is the Jew's worth the squeeze sometimes. Is, is, you know, a fifty thousand dollar expense actually going to generate? And when's it going to pay off? And we don't know that until we do it, unfortunately. It's just, I'm, so I'm wondering what the numbers actually shake out to be.
And it might not be that number. It might be, we might get more park dedication, which, you know, so it's, it's, you know, I don't know if it's entirely apples to apples. But, you know, between the value of the land we would receive and the park fees, hopefully it would give, you know, Parks Director Maurer some more tools to, you know, develop, you know, parks in the city where there's a need. Are you still looking for it, Russ, or should we move ahead?
Go ahead and move on.
Okay. Well, stay tuned for that number. Well, let's move on from the enhancements. If we could go to page 197. That's our CDBG ROF.
Thanks, Mark.
I promise I'll try to go in order here, so you don't have to flip back and forth. This is our Community Development Block Grant Revolving Loan Fund. Basically, this is program income that comes back in from loans that we made out to different folks that initially were utilizing community development block grant funds. So when this money comes back into the city as program income, or ROF, as we call it, we're able to loan it back out. So it's, it's, it's a great fund for us. Mainly, we use it for owner investment, maintenance of property, you know, for people, and typically, you know, five to 10 LMI people a year, and then we also help with down payment assistance for this also. And this was that fund where we said that we have a housing specialist that is paid out of this fund, which is allowable, and then we have a, was it a 60%, 63%? A part-time secretary person in planning that helps with the administration side of it with the program.
How many of the sold-on-ash cash down payments, it looks like this is just, we've only done three to four, like homebuyer down payment assistance?
So we actually have kind of two different pots of money we use for the down payment. We have the CDBG, but then we have the Healthy Neighborhood Fund.
Okay.
So this is coming out of the CDBG. So we, when we talk with somebody if they're interested, we, you know, we have, you know, there's different terms with each program. Mainly, it has to do with the LMI status and what their income is, and that's the determining factor, you know, for, you know, which we use for which path that, you know, we, we kind of push them down for which pot of money.
This is not the one where we could potentially increase that?
That's correct.
That would be the other one, because this is the CDBG.
Yep, we'll get to that in.
Okay.
Couple more, yep.
HNI.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
So really, this is just, like I said, using money that's coming back in and loaning it back out into the community, which is great. So if there's no other questions, could you please turn to page 275? This is a neighborhood improvement loan program. This is something new, fairly new one. It was actually funds that the city received back probably a while ago that we loaned out. They were HUD home funds, so it's actually different than CDBG, and the loan was paid off. So all of a sudden, you know, we received, I think it was a $218,000. So the city is looking at ways that we can use these home funds. HUD likes to make it fun for all of us to have different terms for all their different proper, or their different programs, and we have to figure out, you know, which programs should we use for which project. So we are looking at potentially utilizing these funds. We've been talking, and I think I'd mentioned, with NeighborWorks on a project, so we're hopeful that these funds will be utilized this year. If there's no other questions on that one, we'll switch over to page.
Yeah. So because these goals relate to stabilizing homelessness, is this something that, besides NeighborWorks, can also be involved with either the transitional or the supported transitional living, like tiny homes, or any of the other continuum, homelessness continuum?
Sure. It depends what it's used for. So this brings in, you know, if we have to utilize Davis Bacon, or, you know, so we try to look at, how can we get the, you know, the maximum benefit with these funds? So that is something we have talked about with different, you know, developers, but like I said, it's something we could definitely explore if it would be for more of that, the lower, lower income housing.
So why would this be showing up as engineering survey appraisal, the $218,000?
That is just the, I think, the fund that we have to bid in. I think that's just the object code that we have to use, that it's been placed in.
Okay.
And Finance, I don't know if you have it, Amor?
So I'm sorry, what's the question?
I was just asking why, if, if, you know, if the thought is, you know, this might go towards NeighborWorks or other, why would it be listed as a $218,000, like, expense with engineering and surveying?
It's in 6401.
Professional services.
That's consulting in general.
Yep.
So it'd probably be an outside service, but it can be.
It should be 6417, but it's part of that whole conversion mess that we're still trying to clean up.
But really, the point is, the question's going to come down to what do you want to do with it? There's multiple ideas that we don't have anything.
Where are we in that NeighborWorks discussion?
As a side note, we'll talk about it a little bit here, but Mark, if we want to jump to page 277, Mark, do you want to give an update on?
Yes, so we've met with them a number of times over the last probably three months. They have two potential projects they're looking at doing right now, they're still kind of under the analysis. Side of things is deciding how they want to move forward and what project they want to focus on, with potentially the latest we first, maybe in November, they're going to try to come forward with, with their first project that they'd like to do here in our community.
And this would be with city funds, with us supporting?
So we don't even know what the funding ask would be. Right now, they're evaluating two different projects to see if they even need city funding to do them.
We've just, we've spoken before about these types of developments, and honestly, we're not good at it. And anytime the city's involved, it's, we're really not good at it. They don't turn out financially solvent. We haven't, have we had one that was financially solvent at the end?
Not that the city undertook for a whole, you know, we've never done a new construction or rehab, or GOHNI has not either, so, you know, NeighborWorks has an amazing track record. Have you seen any of their properties up in Green Bay?
Right.
And I think if the timing works, we'll probably have them come maybe and do a presentation to council, because it's, there's a lot that's changed since we first talked with them.
A big difference between the chapter that we were connected with previously, I don't know if any of the other council members were here during that time, that was a different chapter out of southeast Wisconsin than the, the Green Bay one.
Yeah, so we're really excited about this opportunity and, you know, this partnership moving forward. So it'll be great for the community. But if we go to page 277, we'll talk about the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, and this is an area that I really want to focus on today, as we're talking about housing and how important housing is in our community. If you recall, the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, this fund started when TID 7, that was the big tax incremental district over in the southwest industrial park that closed, and we had a huge cash surplus, you know, that we used for this, and that additional, when the state allowed us to keep tax incremental districts open for an additional year, we used that increment from that additional year from a few different TIDS to start this program. So this program meant to jumpstart neighborhood development and housing development in our community. And really, you know, we thankfully continue to, you know, receive increment when we do have opportunities for the different TIDS to, to, you know, have that additional year to get some increment. But unfortunately, you know, that's not a sustainable, I guess, revenue source. And I think the intent of this program was meant to be more capital expenditures, you know, for different maybe loans or grant programs, but unfortunately, it's turning in, I think, to more of an operational expense, and we use this fund to fund GOHNI. It was $100,000 for 2022, and then also for some staff admin time. So I'd like to pass out this graph that we put together at, before we had this meeting, we've had this conversation with Russ and with Mark about, I'm a bit worried that, you know, we're, we're using this fund for a lot, but we don't have that revenue coming in, and especially with some of the initiatives that we want to accomplishment, accomplish as part of the housing study implementation. I think it's important that we, we talk about this. So Anna in our office did this analysis where we took a look at the income we have coming in from when loans are repaid that we've loaned out through the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative programs. She also has a line in there for when, you know, we receive that extra year of increment from the TIDS. So as you see, that's not every year, but we do have some years coming up. We have in there staff admin, so it's just under $100,000 a year. And then we do pay for a portion of a Parks person, Ann Schaefer. She helps us with our marketing with Healthy Neighborhood Initiatives. And then we also have in there project miscellaneous expenses. That is our GOHNI support, that is our, in, in for 2023, we'll be loaning out $300,000 to North Port, North Point Development for Smith School, that's with Andy Dumkey and Cal Schultz Project, which council approved probably earlier this summer, and, and then all of our programs. So that's our new homes in your neighborhood, you know, for RDA lots, that's the down payment assistance.
Sold-on-ash cash program.
Sold-on-ash cash, that's rehab, that's historical, you know, renovations. It's really all of our housing programs. And then on top of that, we also want to start doing the implementation for housing. So factoring all of those in, you can take a look, and you can kind of just see that in, you know, in three, four years, we're going to run out of money if we sustain, you know, the same spending as what we're doing now. So from a staff standpoint, we are looking at, you know, ways to potentially shift some admin costs away from it, but I can't shift everything away, because we do have some staff members that work quite a bit, you know, within these programs. But I really, I'd like to have a conversation with council on maybe removing some of these more operational expenditures out of here, and having this just be really more capital expenditures. One of those is GOHNI. I do believe that we need to fund them, they are a great asset to our community, but that's quite a bit of money to come out every year, and I'd like to see if we could come up with other solutions to fund them. So with that, I know I just kind of gave you quite a bit of information, is there any questions that you may have?
Do you remember how much we, we got, we put aside from that last year of TID 7? I want to say Alan may have said something like, a couple of years ago, that we had like $500,000 left. Maybe I'm thinking of a different fund, but I'm pretty sure it was from the closure of TID 7. So how much did we start out with? What have we produced? I guess, that's kind of my question.
Sure. I think we started out with, I want to say it was at least $3 million, if not more. And like I said, since then, whenever we have an opportunity to extend, you know, our, our different tax incremental districts a year, we do do that, we take advantage of that, of course. But just the cost coming out, like I said, for paying for all our programs, to pay for GOHNI and staff time, that has decreased the balance, because as you see right now, or what we're proposing for 2023 is just under $2 million.
So the, that contractual agreement payments in 2023, that's the GOHNI expense primarily? At $1,076?
No, that is, yes, that is included, I shouldn't have said no, that is included. It's, it's that, that payment, and it's also the $300,000 that, the loan that we're going to provide to North Port Development for the Smith School, and then the rest is just all of our programs, all of our, our loan programs that we have in GOHNI.
The GOHNI number's about $100,000, correct?
That's what it was for 2022. We're still working on what it's going to be for 2023, but I anticipate it'll be in that $75,000 to $100,000 range.
But going back to 2018, we did three years, it was $300,000. I think they're at about half a million out of this entire pot so far.
It was actually more in previous years. The city gave them some more money just to kind of get them jump-started on some of those rehab projects.
Right.
So I have some contracts that we were giving them upwards of $300,000. I'd have to go back and, and see exactly what that number is, but I'd say it's $750,000 at least, if not even a little bit more.
Kelly, excuse me, part of that was what Matt brought up earlier, that was capital funds, that, as Matt pointed out, that hasn't been successful. But part of the expectation was that they were going to do that, so now the question is, is now that they're not doing that, what have they replaced? They're still asking for that same funding, but they're not providing that, that anymore because it's proven not to be successful, so it's, what are they doing with the, with this money since they're not using it for, for these housing projects? And that's the real challenge, because now we're funding operating costs. Admittedly, and I pointed this out to Kelly, I got to give full disclosure, you know, some of Kelly's folks get funded out of that, too.
Doing the same thing, yep.
Now we're getting about, you know, between, between city staff and GOHNI staff, we're probably paying about $200,000 a year. How sustainable is that when our, when our funding source is very erratic? It's all based, it's all based on TIF closures.
And then you tell me if the state changes state statutes and says we can't do that anymore, or maybe they'll increase it to three years instead of one, I don't know. So, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, so that's why, from my standpoint, I'm trying to protect our staff to make sure that we have a sustainable funding, while at the same time, you know, having the funds to, to do these programs that we want to know, we want to do that we know are impactful in our community. And for GOHNI, I mean, we give them, in 2022, we gave them $100,000. They received about, I think, $1,100 from private donations.
Only $1,100?
Yes. So they are, they did receive some money from Habitat to help with the Rock the Block, but, I mean, 98% plus is public funded from the city. So I've really challenged them to, and, and Tom talked about this during the presentation, to find other funding sources. If they're not going to rehab homes and, you know, use, you know, rent out and use that, you know, income to help sustain their organization, what other income sources are they going to have? And like I said, it, they might not have been the best person to do, group to do the rehab, and that's fine, but they're going to have to pivot and, and figure out a way to fund it. So I've challenged them to do that, I'm challenging myself to do it too, because as Mark said, the city is doing it also. But I just, you know, this, this fund is what we use for our housing programs, so I, I want to be upfront with council just to show you, you know, this is the situation that we're in.
Is this the fund where we'll be paying for the High Avenue property out of?
No. That's, yep, that's CIP funding.
CIP, okay.
That this funds, you know, the programs we fund out of here are our down payment assistance, our owner occupied rehab, our rental rehab, our new homes in your neighborhood, our coenforcement assistance program, and our historic preservation program.
Yeah, there's typically no acquisition in this program, or in this fund.
So that's, I guess, the question with that on page 279, then, where is that coming out of, those programming funds?
Under 6412 contractual payments, that's over just $1 million for 2023. It's all kind of lumped into one.
Do we have like a breakout of how many down payments or rehabs or, or that?
We do, yeah. It's not included in the budget, but we can certainly get that. Mark can bring that up, and I think Councilor Murgar, you had a question?
So, yes, I do, thank you, Kelly. I understand, we've honed in on HNI, GOHNI as a, as a source for potential, to help us with the situation you're in, but if you really look at your cash balance situation going forward, you have a structural problem. No matter if, if you cut GOHNI right now, or you fund it elsewhere, you still have a massive structural problem that this thing is still insolvent in a few years.
We do.
So Mike, I'm hearing a lot of GOHNI, 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 however, what I'm not hearing is that, are we actively reviewing all the other programs for their effectiveness? Because at some point, looking at this, half or two-thirds of those need to go away to be able to make this solvent long-term.
No, absolutely. And that's part of, you know, internally, we're looking at admin, but we are kind of combing through all of our programs, what's being used, what's not being used in anticipation for the 23 budget. We did do a quick review, and we did combine some, increase some, lower some, you know, when we looked at the utilization rate. And, you know, you see this 1.0, you know, $1 million in '23, and 751 in '24. We're most likely, that's not going to be the number, but that's what we have budgeted. So that's what the number could be. We're up to about $500,000 for this year. So that kind of gives you a food for thought, but that only extends it a couple of years. That's not the silver bullet that we need. So we are certainly looking at internal, as far as, you know, what we can do to lower those costs from an admin side, so it's really just those capital expenditures of, you know, the programs that, you know, are, are making an impact in the community.
Another way of saying it, it's easier to dial back capital expenditures than it is the operating, and we're going to have to make a decision if we, and I think Kelly's concerned that funding operating expenditures out of this fund, number one, wasn't the original intent, and isn't the long-term strategy. And part of our guilt for having some staff funding out of there is that was done as other funds were reduced. We can't just keep going there. We're going to have to return that back to the general fund, which is going to give Russ and the finance folks indigestion, because that's, that's adding $100,000, that's like adding a staff position. We've kind of hidden it over in this fund, and we have to be honest with ourselves, that we can't hide it in this fund much longer. It's, it's got to go back to, it's got to go back to the, the general fund, and the same thing with GOHNI. Either they need to find some funding sources, or we're going to have to find a funding source for them, because we, we'll exhaust the Healthy Neighborhoods fund. But if we were only capital, we could look at this fund and say, we can, we can tap the brakes on a, on a program and just not do this or that. But honestly, with this fund, this is where some of that affordable housing stuff is going to ultimately come out of. That was the basic legislative intent of the extra year in the TIF. So that's the thing we got to, we got to take a look at. That's the intended purpose of that money, and I think we got to get back on course with that.
Well, that was a good observation, I'm glad that you brought that up.
So we'll continue to, you know, to continue to bring it up, continue to monitor it, continue to look for, you know, ways that we can improve the funding efficiencies in our programs and what's being utilized, but it's something that, you know, we're, we're on the clock, and we're trying to find a solution, and we'll definitely keep council involved with those discussions.
Yeah. Councilor Murgar, now we've looked at programs this year, one of them we've eliminated for next year was our curb appeal grant. There just wasn't enough utilization to, to justify maintaining a program just for, you know, we're budgeting annually for it, getting maybe one a year if we were lucky. So that, that's program that we've eliminated to, to start looking at ways we can, can take a look at the long-term viability of our programs.
Sure, that's just, you know, it's about effectiveness, right? And usage.
Absolutely. And return on investment.
Oh.
You know, I mean, it's, it's, that's a huge thing, you know? Are we seeing those values go up and everything, and we're encouraging more, you know, homes to be sold or rehabbed, so we'll continue looking at that as part of the housing study implementation. Were there any other questions with HNI? No, I gave, we gave you a lot of information about that today.
You got your message across.
Okay, thank you. So our final one for today, CDBG, that's page 281. CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, is an annual allocation that we receive from HUD, because we are an entitlement community. For the 2022, gosh, it was probably in August, they, we're on it, we're not on a calendar year, fiscal year, we're May 1st to April 30th. So we just received our allocation in August, that's about $813,000, I believe, so, 812. So that is what, the funds that we have to work with. But just looking forward, we are looking at different ways to utilize the funds. In the past, it was, you know, for blight removal, obviously, we have the public services, you know, funds that we're able to. funds that we're able to provide for folks, and then just some, you know, other improvements. But we are looking for other unique ways to use the funds, maybe to benefit the city more. One was, you know, working with our facilities manager and administration, is could we use some CDBG funds to help with the ADA, you know, work that we want to do here in City Hall, you know, to make it more accessible. We're looking at working with fire chief on, you know, ways that they can do outreach for some of the low-income areas where, I'm sure he'll tell you that, you know, that's where they have quite a few of their calls are in the lower-income, you know, census tract area. So we're looking at ways to collaborate with other departments to really utilize those benefits or that funding to the greatest impact. So unfortunately, with the timing of when we had to submit the budget and we received our allocation, we just submit the budget as just a lump sum, just because, you know, we weren't able to set up everything already. But, you know, we have our action plan that was approved by council and was then approved by HUD. So that will be our guide for our programming for this coming year. Was there any questions?
It's typically fifteen percent of that CDBG allotment that can be used for admin, right? The max.
Um, I think it's-
Twenty percent for admin, fifteen percent for public services.
Okay.
So we maximize the public services, of course, you know, to be a support for some of our other agencies. And with admin, you know, they're being a little bit more conservative. Like, you have to really demonstrate that you are utilizing CDBG, you know, you're working on CDBG for the admin, so we're making sure that we're following those guidelines from the city or from HUD. But we're also looking at, maybe in the past, you know, if somebody was, you know, requested funding through public services, is there a different way that we can fund it more in like the, you know, the other programs within CDBG to try to free up some funds for public services for another agency? So we're, like I said, we're trying to make sure that we're really maximizing this funding that we receive. And if nobody else has any questions, that's all the budgets we have.
That's completely?
Yeah. Got my list crossed off here.
It's probably appropriate to take a break. If you want to, we could certainly squeeze in a budget for lunch. We got lunches in until noon. We have the city attorney at 11:30. We could ask city attorney to come in. If you want to just take maybe a 15-minute break, we can see if Lynn's available, and then she can come in at 11-ish.
Put yours in too, so we can get out early tomorrow.
Yeah, we can get, Russ and I are always here to squeeze things. And just, somebody asked me a question this morning, and I gave an incorrect answer. Chief Smith is at a conference. All the professional organizations chose to squeeze all their conferences into October. Chief Smith is at a conference, so he will be appearing remotely. And Chief Stanley tomorrow will also be appearing remotely. They're both at professional conferences. So just out of, we can't get you out. Chief Smith is scheduled to be logging on at 3:30, so we'll do that. But you can take a break, so I'll hold the Lynn and Heather come on up.
Would it be possible, just city manager then, because I feel like library, museum, they always get pushed to the very end. If we ended up having extra time, is there an opportunity for them to have a little extra time, I guess, if we're continuing to move ahead?
I'm sure that if we're doing well tomorrow, but to completely change their schedule, you know, to move them up to like today or something like that, Russ and I can do our budgets today. But with their budgets, out of respect for them, they're preparing for tomorrow, partially doing it today. So, but-
But what about if we were to move like finance into today, which you would be able to do, right?
Half hour forty-five minutes early, that wouldn't be a problem.
To give, like I said, it just looks like there's-
You can do that.
They always get pushed to the end and they get drifted on the times.
Oh, okay.
Not always.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not aware of that with either of them, but we can move them up. Especially if we can, you're ready to go, I'm ready to go. We're happy to-
I don't have anything really huge prepared, so I'm ready.
Yeah, so we can do that, but let's, let me go give Lynn a call.
Do Lynn, do yours, yours is right after library and museum. That gives them actually twenty minutes.
I was going to pork you, but I thought you'd talk about this actually.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly.
We are on page 85 and 86, 87. There's very little change in the proposed budget for the city attorney's office. We're primarily staff, so those costs are increasing. But other than the cost, there were some changes in the object codes, which I think Russ maybe addressed.
We already covered that, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a little bit of rebalancing going on in our budget. And we did go up a couple hundred dollars in our subscriptions. That's for things like Westlaw and some of our legal periodicals and those kind of things because our subscriptions are just going up. But that's the only real increase other than staff involved. So I was going to mostly focus on the page 85, our 2022 goals. We had listed coordinating issues and concerns with the sanitary districts. We tried to keep you guys up to date on that. That's kept us busy. We are meeting with the districts in November, so we'll be providing an update after we have, we actually have two meetings set with them. So depending how things go, the first one or the second one, I'll provide updates at that time. And that goal obviously is going to continue into 2023 because it's not completed. We had a goal about real estate issues with the Wyomash Trail in UWO. The Parks Department is going to take over the maintenance of that trail, and there were a lot of detail issues that needed to get done. We're taking it off as a goal. It's not quite complete, but the bulk of the work is done. We've, I think, dealt with all the issues with the UWO portion. We've, I think, dealt with all the issues with the UWO portion. There's a part, directionally challenged west of the UWO by Axaltech.
Parallel to Algoma.
Thank you.
Because directions don't work in this case.
And that's going to get reconfigured a little bit, so that will continue. But it's coming off as a goal for next year because the bulk of it is done and it's still a priority, just not a budgetary priority for the next year. And our third one is kind of an annual for us. We've made a commitment to doing training every year. This last year, we focused on training. We had a lot of new staff who were staffing boards and commissions. So we did some training for the staff for boards and commissions. And then we also made the rounds with about half the boards we did personally, particularly in relation to the rules updates that were done. And we also did some contracts training, especially newer staff. Contract basics, what's a contract? What are things to look forward? What are some potential pitfalls? How are government contracts may be a little different or things that you should watch for in entering contracts on behalf of a municipality? So for 2023, sanitary district stays on. And then training will also stay on. We were looking at another kind of basic level training about real estate issues and same kind of thing. It's a little different with the municipalities, so we're going to focus on that. That's going to relate probably more to community development, maybe some public work staff, but we do open it to anybody, any employees that are welcome to attend that. We're also looking at probably social media and First Amendment training. We have a lot of new people dealing with the city webpages and Facebook pages and those kind of things. And so we are looking at doing some updated training for that. A new goal for 2023 relates to public records. We did an update a few years ago to our public records ordinance. Staff has changed down at the state, and they want us to do some -- something's a little different to meet their requirements for approval. So we're going to have to do that. And then, this is a little personally selfish, we need to update that so I can clean out our storeroom. The city attorney's storeroom is packed and needs to get cleared out. And I've been told that needs to be done before I leave, so that puts it on a little bit shorter clock than it used to be.
Wait, I'm sorry, where was that? Where is that located?
It's a side room in our offices.
Oh, okay.
And we also are looking at possibly putting some of the older records that still need to be kept. We may be coming back at some point to talk about getting those digitized so that they actually are useful. Right now, the box is piled. You probably couldn't get -- so it would be something that would be helpful down the line. On a few other notes, our prosecutor is out on maternity leave, so we have a private attorney assisting us with some of that prosecution work that's right now. Attorney Dan and Hogan will return in December. We are -- you may notice a drop in our numbers on the key performance indicators. I don't pay my outside counsel to track the same way that Amy does. So just if you notice a dip for a few months here, it's the baby dip. So, let's see. Other than that, we've done a number of ordinances and policies this year. All the ordinances go to you. Most of the policies also went to you. I do have a list if you want to hear those. Otherwise, I'm not going to rattle them off since you're already ahead of time and we can get you lunch earlier. We have worked with the clerk's office in relation to the election landscape, which continually changes. So we've been doing a lot of work helping them keep abreast of the new requirements and the changes in the law. We are doing a lot of statewide work, trying to keep all of us out on a more statewide level. We've worked with the League of Municipalities on a couple of projects. The police, there was a change in the law related to police hiring. And there was a new waiver that was needed for all the police departments in the state. I worked with Claire at the league. We got a group together and drafted a waiver that's now being used throughout the state of Wisconsin. I spoke at last year's the fall conference for the league. Not with the league, but with the University of Wisconsin-Madison. Taught in January of last year, and they've asked me back for January this year for a municipal law section, which takes a couple of days where I work from Madison, out of the office, and teach for a couple hours in the afternoon. Amy from our office and I both participated in a municipal law panel for the law school during two lunch hours during the year, so that was kind of fun. And we participate regularly. The municipal attorneys have a statewide conference call where we talk about issues and things going on statewide and have been very active in that group. And I think that is a benefit, particularly for Amy coming in and trying to work her into more general municipal work, gets her a lot of exposure and gets to know some other attorneys throughout the state, too, who are always very willing to jump in and help us and who we also try to help in return. That is pretty much all I had. I always like to be the shortest one, so you won't break my heart if you don't ask questions.
Where are your enhancements?
Between you and clerk's office, right? Usually is the --
Usually. Jessie's new, she's going to want to talk more.
Yeah, but her budget's going down big time, off yours.
One part of it.
Yep.
One part. Oh, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane just texted me that lunch is ready, so if you want to just -- you can do that or if you want to spend a few minutes, we can go over my budget. I'm happy to do that.
Forty minutes.
What's your --
Yeah, let's go over yours.
Okay.
Well, what do people think?
That's fine, yeah.
I didn't know if you had questions on -- there's two things that we don't have in the schedule. If you wanted me to review any of the revenue numbers more in more detail. There's really no set aside time to talk about revenue. And I don't know if you want to talk about ARPA projects. There was a revision. You had a revised ARPA list. There's been some question on funding for capital projects. I certainly could spend a few minutes on that if you wanted to. I'm just offering that up as a suggestion.
Let's knock out council and manager one because that's at the end of the day tomorrow. And to the mayor's point, if library or museum need more time tomorrow, that opens up time for them to eat up or we're out of here earlier tomorrow.
Everybody good?
Yes.
Well, city council budget starts on page 77. Pretty much just following the strategic plan, your priorities, effectiveness of government, and then I think there's only three, but it's all six of your goals. There's essentially no change in your budget. Several months ago, the council decided not to do any research about other salaries or anything like that. Those salaries remain the same.
Wasn't that last year?
Yes, it was. The resolution adopted by council says after each mayoral election, the council can decide if they want to review it. So technically, next May, I would be bringing this back to council and saying, what do you think? Do you want to do any research? So that's about the only thing. That wouldn't affect the budget immediately because you can't change it during your current term. You can only do it for the forthcoming term.
That's, I guess, a question that I have is, so we wouldn't necessarily do anything to impact this, but for the next term going forward, can that only be done with a study or can it be just presumed like as is with our other departments, you know, just a percentage specific increase?
The council's direction was to bring it back every other year for review if council chose to do so. So that would be up to council to decide.
When was the last time? And sorry, just to clarify, we're talking about the council salaries?
Yes.
When was the last time that's changed?
Yeah, I would say about 14 or 15, 2014, 2015. Yeah, it was -- the subcommittee consisted of -- it would have to be 14 because it was council member Cummings and council member Herman were the subcommittee that was created. Is that correct, Fitz? Yeah, so it had to be 14 because Steve Cummings got elected mayor in 15. So, and he was still a council member at the time. So it would have been 2014, so eight years ago now.
Do you remember what that changed? Like what from --
It was about $500 adjustment for each, both council and the mayor.
But it had been a pretty significant time, I think.
Yeah. So, but that's obviously, that's council policy call on that one. So that's the council budget. There hasn't been a lot of traveling because there isn't been a lot of conferences or anything. But I'm anticipating that'll get ratcheted up a little bit as we emerge from COVID. My budget is somewhat similar. The increases are basically as approved by the council for my salary. And then there's also Diane who's in there. And then my basic budget of personnel costs and then other minor costs for primarily conferences and things of that nature. So happy to answer any questions you might have about mine. Deputy Mayor Moverhour just recently contacted me about my review and everything, and that'll be done. But that's not going to have any impact on the budget. That's reflected in there already.
Has the, what, city manager's salary changed? No, they're combined, so.
The council approved an amendment to my agreement two years ago that laid out my salary through 2025.
Aaron must have, might have missed the opening comments. There's no adjustments for salaries in any of the budgets. We do have $1,274,000 in contingency for the class and compensation study that would cover adjustments for employees.
Step increases are reflected in here, though, right?
I wouldn't cover.
Insert bill joke. Something in your salary.
Yeah, there's something.
There would usually add something right now, yes.
Yeah.
Just a real quick small thing on the city council budget. So we went from $700 and some dollars to $4,000 for training and development for council. Is that with the expectation that next year, council members will attend league conference? Or what is that jump? I mean, it's a small amount, just curious.
Well, as Russ mentioned earlier, several accounts were bounced around. So I think the increase, minor increase in league dues, but pretty much everything is just one account bouncing from one to another. There's really, there's really no change. It's just the object codes look different. Remember Russ said earlier about the object codes? Things are just bouncing around, but they, they're pretty much the same numbers. You'll see down, farther down, there's other funds. I think, oh, the subscription, $7,000 net. Which subscription is that? Is that Apolco or the -- Fitz, do you know? I think --
Apolco is in media services budget.
No, okay. I know it, I just can't remember it, so.
But the employee development, the $4,000 bucks is just a planning and a holding spot that if you wanted to go to any league meetings, there's allocations for that.
That's just for council, yeah?
Yes, yeah, just council. Yeah, I'll find out over the lunch break, but that's -- there was something in there that got put in the council budget. I can't remember what it is, but I can find out.
6422, that holds the league's membership?
Yeah. Any other questions about either of those budgets? Otherwise, if you want to delve a few more minutes into some of the things Russ was talking about, we didn't really give much time for that, except in finance, but certainly revenues and things like that. Russ, what else did you want to point out?
I was just looking at a question on --
So we could go ahead and do finance then, in this last half hour? Is that what we're planning, to go ahead and do finance in this last half hour?
I was just looking, trying to see if I can get you that quick question answered on subscriptions.
I was just going to go ask Diane.
Okay, yeah, we can go through finance.
Why don't you go through finance? I'll get that answered.
Couple of things, let's see. You want to go through revenue or not?
Yeah, let's do it.
So if you wanted to go through revenue, right behind the general fund summary on page 73, is a listing of all of the revenues that come into the general fund. You know, some of this is shown in our organization codes when it comes to like public safety and those type of things. But this is a recap of the entire general fund revenue from property taxes. City manager talked about in his letter, the intergovernmental revenue portion, license and permits by the various, again, organizations, fines and forfeitures, charges for services, internal services, other financing sources. You go for the third from the bottom line, 010072, taxes and interest at 1.5. That's actually a payment in lieu of tax from the utility. So that's money coming into the general fund from the water operations. And it's required by the Public Service Commission that the value of their land and improvements and facilities, if it was taxed, would have to pay a certain dollar value based on the tax rate. Last year, I calculated that out at $1,542. We had a million for a number of years, but it's supposed to be an actual calculation of the value of the equipment times the tax rate. So that's being the same as 2022 and '23 at $1,005,000. So I don't know if there's specific questions. If you flip the page over, if you're interested in telling a story. Again, most of our revenues in the general fund is for, comes from the tax levy, about 46%. Right now, we're down to 32% from intergovernmental revenue, the state and federal government, and then license and permits and all other municipal accounts for about a third. And that's shown on that graph as well. If you're looking at summary, page 75 is the summary, but we're going through each department in total.
Is that for the intergovernmental revenue where it says other revenue? Is that what we get from the state?
That's shared, yes. Shared revenue, municipal service payment program, general transportation aids, all those. So a whopping 1.08% increase. And I'm trying to think of what the -- there must be another revenue in there because, well, that's part of the shared revenue program. It's really, really minor for us. The 3%, most of the dollar increase because we're really going from basically $16 million to $16,160, $30,000 of its municipal service payment program. The expenditure restraint's going up a little bit, too, right, Russ? And that's, my theory on that is, there are some cities that are just throwing the towel. And so the pie has remained the same for years. So even though the pie's the same, we get a slightly larger increase in that slice of the pie. But it gets split amongst all the other, you know, 1,700 municipalities throughout the state or the ones that --
9.6 is shared revenue. That's the biggest chunk. $3 million is general transportation aids. And that's -- $3 million is general transportation aids, and that's going to be down.
Already overstated by 150,000.
Okay. Connecting highways is another chunk.
Where are you, what page are you looking at, Russ?
107.
107?
107.
Oh, oh, there are lists each.
There is. Thanks, Steve. Thank you.
You're welcome.
But you could see a slight increase on payment for municipal services. Oh, expenditure restraint, it's like 150,000, so that's, my theory is that there, because there's no increase in that program.
1.5. Expenditure restraint?
Yeah, but it was 1.4 the year before, so it's, you know, that's, I think people, I think there are some communities who are just throwing in the towel.
I was having a side conversation with council member Ford during the break. You know, we, we have to do certain things that qualify for the expenditure restraint program. I have a little box on the budget enhancements that show that we actually are in pretty good position. From an expenditure restraint position, we could actually increase our expenditures because of the CPI and net new construction. We get 60% of net new construction, which was 1.3 or 1.4. Anyways, we could increase our expenditures by.
Technically?
Technically by about $2 million, but the, the question is, what's your appetite for the levy? So expenditure restraint, we do have the ability to kind of work within the rules and, and actually, there are some credits that we can still take advantage of, but when we talk about creating an internal service fund, we're trying to keep ourselves in a good position to continue to qualify because if we were to lose, and some communities have actually gone to the process of doing expenditure restraint every other year, if we lose that for even one year, we got a $1.5 million hole in our budget. And, you know, based on our levy, I don't think we could absorb a $1.5 million loss in revenue. So that's a big share of it.
Russ, excuse me, if I'm correct, this year's funds were based on our eligibility because from 2021.
21, yes.
We've stayed under the limit. If some of those communities had the foresight to know where we're at today, where we've got an expenditure restraint limit of like 8%, they may have held out a little more. But to the ones like Russ is talking about, people deciding, the term I use, some communities just blow it up, they forego their expenditure restraint because they, they just can't sustain it.
Correct.
We've been able to hold on. This year, we are not going to have an expenditure restraint challenge. It's really more of the levy challenge.
We didn't in the 2022 budget either. What, some of the council members that have been around for a while will recall that usually in November or December, I'll come in and ask for a budget amendment to actually create more of a contingency account, so we would increase our base so that the base is higher so you don't lose it, because if you, this is one of those programs, if you don't use it, you lose it. So there are, there are, there's the ability, if you still have room, is to go back, change the 2022 budget artificially by creating additional contingency, even though we don't plan on spending it, so that we have a higher base for the next cycle. It's, I would just say, it's being creative accounting as, as we learn to work within the rules that are given to us.
I just have to, I mean, there's a story here, right, that every municipality is facing, that we have a statewide program called expenditure restraint that's designed to keep spending low, that's incentivizing us to make sure that we're spending to the max, otherwise we get penalized for it, and has also left us with room to raise our tax levy an additional $2 million.
Yes.
So when we complain about the state system being broken, that's part of what's going on here. The incentives to reduce spending don't do that.
Right, and, you know, I could get on my high horse and talk about shared revenue, and I think I have to this group before, and, and the city manager's pretty good at reminding you where shared, and I did during our budget workshops too, where shared revenue has been over the last 10 years, and it hasn't changed, but yet, if you look at the income stream, again, the history on shared revenue, it was created back in the 1900s, 1914, when income tax was introduced as a way of leveling, leveling the playing field, reducing taxes, and sharing the income tax that was collected. And at one point, it was 80% back to local government, state, counties and, and cities and villages, and now it's an appropriation that's based on political distribution by the state budget system.
A formula that was created 30 years ago.
That's not even being used anymore.
It's not even used anymore. It's just like.
It's just like last year plus whatever they decide to appropriate it, so. Yeah, if you look at, I think I have a draft done of my PowerPoint presentation for the public hearing, and I always, I did that before with that cert, that pie chart from 10 years ago versus today, and look at how much more we're depended on property taxes when we had a lot more support from shared revenue previously.
I, I had the, the privilege of bringing back during an interim period Ed Noakes, who was the finance director previous to me. So, you know, I've had the privilege of having about 30 years worth of, 30 to 35 years of knowledge of this organization's finances with, with having Ed, and Ed, there was an old joke that in Ed's office, he had a bunch of socks tacked up on the wall, and every time he ran into an expenditure restraint problem, he created another sock, and, and that was Ed's method to get around some of the expenditure restraint limits. And that's why when Jim was in here this morning talking about the street lighting fund, the street lighting fund was intent, was done specifically for expenditure restraint, and we have a number of those. What Russ did this year was central garage. Ed Noakes would have looked upon Russ with great satisfaction, and, you know, it's like, well done, and because they, these are the things we do, which goes to council member Ford's standpoint, the system's broken, it's got to be fixed. Russ just posted something last week to, to, was that LinkedIn?
It's a public policy forum had talked about, you know, the system being broken, and I basically concurred saying, you know, this is the hand we're forced to live with right now.
And so part of our committee that I'm on, the work is to just make a point that the system's broken, and these little tricks are really just a silly chess game rather than addressing real expenditure limits and, and real efficiencies. I mean, we, I, I say, we always look for those efficiencies, but that we have to do them within the context of expenditure restraint, and sometimes there's the adage, you got to spend money to make money, you got to spend money to save money, but then we spend the money, we get hit with expenditure restraint, so we have to create a loophole to get us to be able to do that, to save the very money we're trying to save in the first place. It's just the logic just, just drives you crazy. But no different than you have an accountant for your business to help you through all the loopholes that you don't understand. I make widgets. I'm not a tax accountant, and you have, you need an accountant to do all that stuff just to get around whatever, whatever laws are. We have these laws, and they're more silly than, than even private sector has to deal with.
So to answer your question on page 107, that's all the other revenues that we collect, and it's just kind of broken down by object code. If you were to go to the page right prior to that, on page 105, is a listing basically of the revenue with some minor expenses, but it's basically property taxes, mobile home taxes, that I talked about, the payment in lieu of tax from the utility. We have some other payment in lieu of taxes from some other factors as well, but it's pretty minor. And then the special charges for weed cutting, snow removal, they're all in that organization of 01072.
I have a question on the mobile home fees. What is that? I've never noticed that before.
It's actually, when you have a house, you pay property tax. If you have a mobile home, you still pay property tax, but the owner of the mobile home park pays it on behalf of the tenant, if I remember correctly, and they have to do it on a monthly basis, not on a annual basis.
Mobile homes are treated like, like, like a personal property?
Yeah. So they're, they're paying property tax and a fee?
No, they're paying.
In most, some cases, they do.
Oh, both?
They pay the operator of the park a fee, but the operator of the park also charges them what they have to pay for.
Like an HOA kind of thing?
Yes. Yes. So this is, we have to count for that separately because it comes in and then some of that goes out to other taxing jurisdictions, so this is our, our net revenue for the city, but it's really the property tax collected from the mobile homes that we have in the community. Anything else on the revenue? If you want, I could spend a few minutes. We go to 010071 on page 103. Actually, it starts on page 101. For the finance department, that's the general administration of my division. Now, we, we worked with long range, as far as the strategic plan goals, we worked with long range finance and council. We updated our general obligation debt policy to 40% of the state legal debt limit. We're working on that. Doing other strategic plan initiatives to deal with planning and funding of, of all of our activities. ERP expenditure, it's not expenditure restraint program, it's enterprise resource.
Program.
Program? I don't know.
ERP.
It's Munis, it's our accounting system, it's our payroll system, it's everything else.
I still call it accounting system.
It's our asset management system. So we got, we're, we're doing a new module dealing with our capital projects, which is defined in our 23 goals, but we're also implementing more modules with the enterprise portion of it. We continue to work on our capital improvement planning and scoring process. We made some changes a couple of years ago, but we still want to keep that updated, and then we work with administrative services and just kind of doing a review of our health insurance, especially now that we're self-insured and, and running that program, so there's a little bit of work on our end. In '22, we did reorganize the department to create a budget analyst. We did do five debt issues that we talked about earlier, and then, again, I, I mentioned it, we took on $7.3 million in 2022 for 2023 projects, and that's when I talked about the levy. We transitioned to a new auditing firm, and we're still working on special assessments and keeping track of the records on all the different special assessment programs. We've had, actually, we've had a number of complaints up until we get this new system in place. We were dealing with spreadsheets, manual spreadsheets. We still have too great of a reliance on spreadsheets when we're getting information from public works on, on street assessments, sidewalk assessments, and taking that down and putting that out in our assessment specialist, and sometimes that information's not getting presented in a timely manner, so when real estate folks try to contact us for outstanding special assessments, there's been cases where we've given not complete picture of, of properties, and it's caused a little bit of a heartburn and concern in the real estate market, and we're working to correct on that, to correct that, and we, we think we have a good system in place now to do that, but we're still kind of smoothing out some of those edges. It's, you know, it's been a smooth transition, but it's, it's taken a little bit. Bo, go ahead.
The, the goals there, though, with the implementation of credit card collections, would that be for?
You're jumping ahead on me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to get to that. The first goal, the ultimate goal is, I'm not going to be here forever, and I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. I am working very hard to make sure we have adequate resources and staff because my position is becoming more and more difficult to recruit qualified candidates for. I'm doing everything in my power to have multiple choices that are available and have the potential to step into that role when I leave. So that's an important part of my succession planning for you as city government. The next thing is, we've begun to implement credit card collections at city hall. To date, we've accepted credit card payments outside of city hall. You'd have to go through, do the electronic module to do that, which has caused some concern with the cost of doing business nowadays. We're looking at how much we can absorb is part of the cost of doing business, just like we absorb some banking fees, and we're doing a cost benefit analysis right now, but we have a module from our ERP provider, Tyler Munis, that we can do credit card collections through their module instead of another third-party vendor, in which we think we can economically absorb some of those costs for any transaction, whether it's license and permits, whether it's utility bills, or whether it's taxes. The holdup on all this is the, the fee on the credit card, and some of that is based on a percentage, so we still have to do some more analysis on whether or not it makes sense to absorb all of those costs, or whether or not we can return some of those costs. I guess from a customer's satisfaction and performance, I'd rather try to do as much of this stuff remotely as opposed to being in person. I know we can't do it all remotely because we have a lot of people in our community that still like to come and pay in person, but I think we need to get to a point where if it's convenient to do it online, we should be doing that online, whether it's on our website or a portable, a portal or any other source. And actually, quite honestly, and I think you're seeing this in maybe some of the financial institutions where you're starting to get service charges for in-person transactions as opposed to online transactions. It's a whole different philosophy, but we've started the process of looking at how we can implement credit card collection without having an add-on fee, if that makes sense, and if it's convenient for our residents and customers. So that's what we're exploring right now, and I'd like to work on that more for next year. And I'm sorry if I interrupted you.
Nope. No, you answered my question.
Any other questions about our go on credit cards? Capital assets, I just talked about a little bit, and we still need to work on our internal service fund, so that's, that's a big thing for us. Expenditure-wise, not, a lot has changed because it's a lot of people costs, there are some other, you know, benefit costs and, and audit fees and, and subscriptions and memberships, but in the grand picture, it's mostly wages. We used to have a separate department for our auditing fees, we rolled them into finance administration. It just didn't make sense to have a separate org for audit services. We do allocate our audit services to other enterprise funds, so it's not all absorbed by the general fund, but this is a general fund portion.
So I do have a question, Russ, and I'm not sure if it would be here necessarily, but maybe it's in another area. So when folks take the option for the special, special assessment financing through the city?
Mm-hmm.
And that, those payments come in, where, where does that get reflected here?
There's actually a special assessment fund, if you bear with me for a minute.
And if I'm jumping ahead?
Nope.
I can wait.
It's actually, special revenue on capital projects, it's probably capital projects. It's on page 287, right behind the capital projects tab.
So we borrow the money to do the projects, and it used to be, I don't know, maybe half-ish, folks would take the city finance option. We reduced that interest rate to 5%. I think it was last year. I guess I'm just trying to understand where we're at in that process now, like, about how many people are.
Yeah, I don't have the, I, I don't have like a KPI for that. I can just tell you in general terms, for a while, this fund did not have adequate resources to carry those special assessment charges, so we would, for a while, the city was actually borrowing the cost of construction and the cost of the estimates for special assessments. In 2022 and moving forward, we're trying to finance. we're trying to finance the net portion, only the part we need for our expenses on the capital projects. And we're allowing the special assessment fund to front-end those construction costs until the assessments come in. There's now enough funds in that, in this 317 that we can do that without financing it. So we pay the construction project. And when we send out the letters, we create the liability within the special assessment fund so that when a property does close or people do make their payments, it goes into this fund. As far as numbers, James might have a better handle on that than I do, but we take care of recording the receivable and then the payments towards that receivable.
In theory, if we stop doing special assessments, which I know has been discussed plenty of times, in theory, if we got rid of every general special assessment, the fund would eventually zero out. Everybody would have paid in and the liabilities would be gone. We had a cash flow problem about, probably about 2014. And we started to borrow for, to improve the cash flow of the fund. Now we're in a position where our cash flow issue, we've got as much coming in as going out. So we're okay. But we always have to keep an eye on that. Every year now, finance looks at it and says, how did we do? There were some, for a while, people were paying it off because our rate was considered too high. My concern right now is that we could potentially see that reverse because our rate's pretty good right now compared to what they might be able to get. So, and, and you may have heard me say, our job is not to be a bank, but essentially, if we become a bank, then we got to manage it a little better. So we're going to have to keep an eye on that every single year.
Yeah, a long range finance and council adopted a change in the special assessment manual procedures to change the interest rate down to 6%. It was 8. Down to 4, I'm sorry. I'm one of those numbers. Sorry, it's a year, the time of the year when I'm getting numbers all over the place.
I thought we went down to 5, so...
It's 4.
Okay.
Jennifer's reminding me. Jennifer said that 75?
75% people take installment plans.
75%?
And that's an increase. So that's, that's saying that the rate, they, they'd rather pay us 4% than, you know...
And I have to, in full disclosure, admit to you that with part of our changes in our budgeting process, because we now have a special assessment clerk, if you look at line 6102, there's actually operating expenses going to this fund that didn't happen before. So we actually are allocating one of our, not a cashier position, but a specialist...
Financial specialist?
To this fund. And I do have to tell you that when we talk to administrative services in Mr. Fitzpatrick's area, they're looking at a project manager to finance some of the internal projects that we have on the horizon. We talked about our facilities and upgrading our facilities. One of the enhancements includes a project manager that would be charged out to projects. But until they get charged out the projects, we would, I'm proposing that, that we add another budget position to this fund. So we should have a personnel sheet.
There.
Yep. We need to have, we have one for sure. And we have an enhancement for one more. I just want to be full disclosure on where we're at.
Is this one that got moved from your department there?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a reduction. If you look at...
We added, we added a person.
Yeah, so...
Oh, yeah, I don't see the sheet in here.
Yeah, there's no sheet in there now. But there will be. It's basically one person.
Page 288 won't be blank much longer. We got to get that.
288, come 288.
Something will happen.
Anyways, that's, that's pretty much what, kind of, in addition to the water and sewer and stormwater billing stuff that I don't think I need to cover now. We'll cover that when we come here. But, you know, in my division, we have the cashiers. We have a lot of behind the front counter work on accounts payable, accounts receivable, payroll. And then we have the utility billing folks. And that's all part of my division. And majority of the utility billing folks[1763.28]